This is May 11th, 2020. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
Stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first order of business is if there are any changes to the agenda. Does anybody want to see anything on the agenda moved around or changed?
No changes from staff, Mr. Mayor.
All right, moving on to item four, we have a proclamation recognizing May 17th to 23rd as Public Works Week. And we have a quick presentation by Mr. Machida.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Just like to actually do real quick information that is coming, May 17th to 23rd is the National Public Works Week. Basically, it recognizes all the employees that are working in public works and all the work that they do. Certainly, we'd like to, on behalf of myself, as well as my staff, and all our engineers and public work officials working in San Carlos, we'd like to say thank you for the proclamation and recognizing May 17th to 23rd as the National Public Works Week.
My apologies. I'm just going to summarize our proclamation. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being in the city of San Carlos. And public works professionals in San Carlos are heroes because they do their jobs so well and they are generally unrecognized by the public at large. And I would just like to add that I consider them right up there with any other public safety department that we have. Without a good infrastructure in our city, we would be in poor shape. So I would like to congratulate and recognize our Public Works Department as part of National Public Works Week. Next is, next order is public comment. This is persons wishing to address the City Council on matters that are not on the agenda for tonight. There is a public comment card on the screen. If you will dial the number, 669-900-9128, and when prompted, enter the meeting ID 452388965. Once you connect, you'll be placed on mute and queued up in a waiting room. When it's your turn to speak, the last three digits of your phone number will be announced, and you will be unmuted. And by the way, we have items on our agenda later this evening that will involve public comment. Once we have our staff presentation, we will have questions by the council, and during that period of time, the slide you see now will reappear on the screen, and you will be invited to call in and queue up to ask your questions. And when, when we are ready for that, I will ask our city clerk if there are callers, and then she will allow you to unmute yourself and speak. And everyone is given two minutes to make their public comment. Okay, after having said all that, Crystal, has, do we have anyone who has called in so far?
Yes, actually, it looks like three people are waiting in the queue. I will say that two of them are trying to participate in this meeting with a video. So, Dakunha and John, if you can hear me, if you can please close out and call into the number so you can make a public comment audibly. And I'm going to admit one of the callers who is calling by phone here.
Are we ready for them?
Hold on a second, unmute. A good evening caller, phone number ending in 827. Thank you for calling into the San Carlos City Council meeting. Please lower the volume of the meeting behind you if you have that on. You will have approximately two minutes to address the council. If you could please state your name for the record before starting your comment, that'd be appreciated. You are currently unmuted, so you may begin when you're ready.
Sure, great, thank you. My name is Heather Kech, K-A-E-C-H, and I'm a resident of San Carlos. And I was just calling in to, to voice my feelings on the slow streets, the proposition to make some of the residential streets not entirely closed, but partially closed for the purpose of residents being able to utilize the space in the street.
I apologize, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, that's actually an agenda item tonight. It is, it is going to be a study session, item 9A. And we invite you to save your comments for that agenda item when it comes up.
Certainly. What, what time should I call in for that?
Well, we have, it's hard to say, but I would, I would say give it about, you might want to check back on about 40 minutes or so. That might be a little early, but I don't want me to miss your opportunity.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Heather.
Bye now, uh-huh, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Crystal, is there another?
Yes, we do have another caller right now. Let me go ahead and admit them in now. Caller phone number ending in 034. Thank you for calling into the San Carlos City Council meeting. You will have approximately two minutes to address the council. If you'd like, please state your name prior to beginning your comments. And if you haven't already, if you can lower the volume of the meeting behind you, that would be great. You are currently unmuted, so you may begin when you're ready. Oh, it looks like the caller just exited.
Oh.
Oh, no, okay.
Did we lose them?
We lost him, and I'm seeing somebody with a participant name of Dakunha trying to log in with the video again. We are not allowing participants, the public participants, to participate with the video. So if you can please watch the meeting on Comcast Channel 27 or AT&amp;T U-verse, or on our meeting web portal, that the link is on our agenda, and call in with the number, then we would admit you in to speak at that time. Mr. Mayor, I'm not seeing any other callers at this time.
Okay, maybe if they call in and we have, we could take a little break in the, in the course of things, we might be able to let them speak.
Okay, I'll let you know if I see them.
This is still sort of an unusual dynamic.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. For the moment, we're going to move on to item six. These are council communications and announcements. These are brief items from members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. And at this point, I am looking to see if, hang on just a second. I'm just looking for, sorry about that. I've just got to reacquaint myself. Do any of my colleagues have any comments they want to make over what's, about what's been involved in over the last couple of weeks?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Sorry, I missed the raise hand button.
That's all right. I heard you and I know.
Thank you. I just had two brief comments, one of which will be related to an agenda item that I'll bring up during agenda setting at the end of the meeting. I think, I don't know if other people are aware, but I've become aware of a pretty serious short-term financial challenge that the San Carlos School District is facing due to COVID-19. And in fact, they're looking at having to potentially cut a whole bunch of positions, librarians, tech support, classified staff, in response. None of which would be good things to lose because they're all necessary for a high-performing district. I talked to Neil Layton, one of the trustees, about it, and I think there actually may be a way.
I just had two brief comments, one of which will be related to an agenda item that I'll bring up during agenda setting at the end of the meeting. I think, I don't know if other people are aware, but I've become aware of a pretty serious short-term financial challenge that the San Carlos School District is facing due to COVID-19, and in fact, they're looking at having to potentially cut a whole bunch of positions, librarians, tech support, classified staff, in response, none of which would be good things to lose because they're all necessary for a high-performing district. I've talked to Neil Layton, one of the trustees about it, and I think there actually may be a way for the city to loan them some money safely to help them through the crisis. I recognize that, that, you know, doing something like that is unusual, and we have to, you know, manage our resources because we have our own challenges to face. But a couple of things, one is, I think we need to remember every resident, almost every resident of the district is also a resident of the city, and so effectively, we are one community. And to be honest, as far as I've ever been able to tell, the overwhelming reason people come to buy homes in San Carlos, which keeps our real estate market afloat, is because of the school district. That's the primary reason they come here. So in that sense, you know, besides helping them out if we can in the hour, their hour of need is the right thing to do, it's also in our self-interest. I think it's a smart thing for us to think about doing. So I'll come back to that in agenda setting about what specific idea I had. And then the only other comment I wanted to make was something that I learned in listening to Dr. Morrow this week on one of the county conference calls, you know, we are moving towards a phase of this response, where more relaxation is going to occur in the health orders, and so people are going to want, or are going to be faced with making choices of their own about how to keep themselves healthy. And I'm not going to speak for anybody's particular situation, everybody has to judge that for themselves. But one thing Dr. Morrow said really struck me, which is, he doesn't know for sure, because we unfortunately have not been able to do enough testing to come up with the real number, but he suspects that only around 5% of the population has actually been exposed to COVID-19. And so if we relax too soon, too quickly as individuals, we could be back where we were in early February, where 100% of the population hadn't been exposed, and now it's only 5% lower than that. So we could be back where we were, and things could restart and, you know, get really bad really quickly. So that's just, you know, something for people to think about as they make their individual choices. Thanks.
Laura.
Thank you, Mayor Collins, I appreciate that. So as I've shared in past meetings, I am on one of the committees with respect to the return to, with, with account with respect to the long-term planning, which is a 30-60-90 and longer-term plan. Just to kind of put into context kind of where we are right now, the state is moving very quickly to reopening the state and is currently at Phase Two of the roadmap, and the six Bay Area County Health Departments are working together to deliver a consistent policy in response, and that will be announced shortly. It is important to remember that this is not a return to normal, COVID-19 is still spreading, and California is gradually reopening only where risk can be reduced. It is ultimately up to each individual to inhabit safe practices to keep the, the risk of infection low, and businesses are now being asked to implement safety measures, as well, the government, as you all know, is setting policy to help create a framework. So more on the county plan, that's in draft form, it's moving its way through various teams, and I'm sure that that will be published soon, and their website does have a wealth of information, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Laura. Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two quick things that I'd like to express tonight. Number one, I'd like to congratulate the Youth Advisory Council, right here in San Carlos, that collected over 170 boxes of diapers and wipes at their diaper drive this weekend, which will be donated to One Life Wellness Center, which is giving out food and supplies to families in need every Friday, so I wanted to congratulate them and say job well done. And I also just wanted to note that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we're very fortunate here in San Carlos to have a number of resources right here at our fingertips. Star Vista is here in San Carlos, which offers a 24/7 crisis hotline, as well as a teen chat service, which is onyourmind.net. We're also home to One Life Counseling Center, which provides accessible counseling to individuals and families, and the San Mateo County Library is online, has just a wealth of information and virtual resources. So I think in this time, you know, we're all feeling a little extra stress and anxiety, and I think that May is a really important month to recognize, but if you need a little help, please, please do reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I just had a couple of comments, you may have read the newspapers, San Transit ridership is down over about 50% right now, I think it's maybe closer to 70%. San Transit is awesome for the time being, because they just want to have people able to ride the buses, so the service has been cut back a little bit, but the ridership is down quite a bit. Caltrain ridership is, is down an incredible 95 to 98%, and that has obviously, everyone at Caltrain from top to bottom, very concerned. Some people have been wondering about the electrification work, that's basically a separate budget, and that does continue. There are some issues with the contractor over installation of, of foundations and poles and that sort of thing, where the catenary wires are going to go, but the work is continuing, it's not on schedule at the moment, but they expect it to be within the next 30 days. So that's all I have. Adam, did you have anything that you wanted to report on tonight?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Okay, great, thanks. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on next to the consent calendar. These are items that we approve in one motion unless there's any particular item that a council member or anyone else wants to pull from the consent calendar. Does any, anybody want to either remove an item or make a motion?
Through the chair, just, Mr. Mayor, if you can remind me, I don't want to pull an item, but I want to vote no on it, so I, I believe when Crystal polls us, I just tell her which item I wish to vote no on. Is that correct?
Correct.
Good, thank you.
I move the consent calendar.
Councilmember Rack, if you could also read the two ordinances.
I've got to find it, hold on, Crystal, give me a second now. Spoke too soon, see, I've got to pull up what you, what you put up there, if I can find it, hold on. Is it meeting action list that it's be under?
Yes.
Okay, I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar, item A through G, and item H adopting ordinance number 1560, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adding chapter 15.60, construction limits to Title 15 of the San Carlos Municipal Code for Construction Time Limits and Penalties. And item I, adopting ordinance number 1561, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 8.10, minimum wage, sections 8.10.030, and 8.10.040, delaying implementation of the local minimum wage increase to January 1st, 2021.
All right, I, Mark, I think that was item I that you wanted to vote no on, did it, so that is so registered?
Yes, I just, I, what I was going to say is that I would, I am voting no on it, I support the minimum wage, but I don't support delaying it. I'm voting yes on everything else.
All right. Crystal, please call the roll.
I'm not sure, did I get a second on that consent?
Oh, I'm sorry, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Okay. Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes, on everything except for I, on which I'm voting no.
Noted. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. We're going to move on now to reports to council. These are reports and updates on key city projects by the city department heads and staff and council, city council subcommittees, they're informative in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this time. So 8A is getting an update on the coronavirus, COVID-19, this is an update only, and I think Jeff Maltby is going to make that presentation. Thanks, Jeff. You might want to unmute yourself. Jeff, it looks like you're still unmuted.
Yeah, I can't hear the recording.
Sometimes he has audio issues, and he'll go off and come back on, and it'll be fine.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm having trouble, I'm muting myself, so I'm just holding down the spacebar while I do this. Crystal, do I have control of the presentation, or are you going to be forwarding it?
You should have control.
Okay, I'll do my best here. Okay, so a number of things have changed with our county and state health orders over the last couple of weeks, and the city staff has done our best to respond to those changes. So we'll give you a brief overview of some of the more significant changes that we have encountered over the last couple of weeks. The, on April 29th, the shelter-in-place order has been extended through May 31st. The order did relax some restrictions, such as allowing for construction and gardening and some other outdoor businesses to commence along with certain outdoor activities for folks, as long as they're in compliance with social distancing guidelines and plans for social distancing within the workplace for the protection of employees and the public. It also allowed for groups of up to 10 children to meet for educational and recreational purposes, again, as long as the social distancing guidelines and precautions are all in place and observed during those gatherings. On May 11th, the order was revised to allow for vehicle-based gatherings with some specific restrictions that folks can look into if they're planning such an event, and I know some folks are with graduation season upcoming, and I've even heard about weddings and those kinds of things, so. I don't seem to be able to advance the slide, Crystal.
Okay, maybe I'll go ahead and help you with that.
Thank you. San Mateo County Strong Programs in the process of, their, their grants are going out to needy businesses. Grants funded directly by cities in the works should be given out soon. The San Mateo Strong Small Business Program received 110 applications from San Carlos businesses before the, before the website was closed due to oversaturation. The county's not yet been able to determine the dollar amounts requested, they're working through the process, so we will let the council know when grants have been awarded for San Carlos businesses, how many were awarded grants and in what amount. The state's begun to ease restrictions slowly per their plan, as its six indicators do show improvement, including redefining what is allowed under its orders to facilitate opening in communities throughout the state. They're moving into Fa, Stage Two of the reopening plan, which supports the opening some retail businesses. In San Mateo County and most of the Bay Area, these restrictions will be the same as the state, but will be eased at a slower pace, we're hearing. The state is working to continue to distribute funds to citizens to help with unemployment, feeding seniors in need, helping those needing, needing sick leave, et cetera. The governor's budget may revise, will be released on May 14th, and will reflect a significant change in revenue for the state, going from a fairly sizable surplus to now projecting a large deficit. The state's FAQs now allow tennis among household members and singles who do not share equipment, requiring continuous monitoring. We understand from the county that, that they're sort of mirroring that. We're going to be holding off until maybe towards the end of the week to make a determination around tennis, that the issue that we're having is, is the order seemed to require onsite management and oversight of the rules, as opposed to just posting the rules that are in place and trusting the public to follow them. That could be an issue for us, but we're waiting. Wednesday, the Parks and Rec Directors in the county are going to be meeting, and we've asked our Parks and Rec Director, Amy Newby, to bring up that issue specifically, if it doesn't already come up as part of that meeting, to have a discussion with the other cities about what's going on and how they're handling it, to see if there's any illumination there in a path forward that we could help accommodate. We're continuing the Neighbor-to-Neighbor Program in partnership with the Community Foundation. As Councilmember McDowell mentioned, the Youth Advisory Council hosted a diaper drive at the youth center and got an overwhelming response. I understand that boxes of diapers are still being delivered via Amazon to One Life Counseling Center, so that's great. I'd expect nothing, nothing less from our, our wonderful and generous community. Helping One Life Counseling Center with its food distribution program, with funding provided by the city, and with other resources and volunteers. I know a number of council members have volunteered, as well as some of our staff members, so that's really a great and amazing way to serve the community right now. We sent out another postcard, another spotlight newsletter to the community, mostly focused on opportunities to donate and/or volunteer with organizations in the community. We're accepting applications for the Rental-Tennant Assistance Program, which we're partnering with Samaritan House on. So that information is out to the community, and, and we'll be looking to see what we can do to help in that area. Community members, we're asking to follow us on social media, Nextdoor, Facebook, Twitter, and our website at www.cityofsancarlos.org/coronavirus, or call the county hotline at 211 for information and updates. You can also call the city hotline at 802-4347 if, if help's needed, or to volunteer in San Carlos. And we are planning to participate in a blood drive on June 6th. You can call 1-800-RED-CROSS, or 1-800-733-2767, or go to the Red Cross website to sign up for the few spots that are remaining. Our City Emergency Operations Center continues to remain open in a virtual environment. We're providing information to the community and our elected officials through that process. We're supporting local nonprofits and their community efforts. We're responding to changing needs and planning for the slow reopening of city facilities and other business activities in the community. We continue to acquire personal protective equipment, PPE, for when city facilities can reopen. We want our employees to be able to do their job in a, in a safe environment. We discontinued the citywide bulky item collection program, now that Recology's program has resumed. The sheriff's office is issuing citations for various health order violations when warnings are being unheeded. So if folks are reasonable, or they didn't understand, or maybe just had something slightly out of kilter, they'll get a warning, and if they refuse to comply, then citations will be issued. Our building and planning staff have once again become very busy now that construction has resumed in the city, so they're wearing a few hats right now, still with their work related to our COVID-19 response, both internally and out into the community, and, and with nonprofits and those efforts, as well now as fulfilling their role in terms of providing oversight and assistance for private construction within our community. All construction is now allowed under the latest health order. We issued information to all construction sites to ensure compliance with hours of operation and physical distancing rules. We've received some complaints about noise, which was anticipated. We've also received some complaints from contractors about our slightly reduced construction hours. This is understandable, you know, contractors were out of work for a while, they want to get going on their projects. The community is still sheltering place at home and has gotten used to the quiet many weeks that we had while construction was not. So we'll do what we can to, to try to mitigate those issues if there are things that we can do. We will attempt to help both parties reconcile, but I think for now, we, we need to recognize that construction has begun again. These are private construction projects for the most part that have already been approved and permitted. Public outreach status, we're issuing information via our website, social media, and the community support newsletter and US Mail. We're overseeing the city hotline, overseeing the Neighbor to Neighbor campaign, using signs, billboards, banners to inform the community about rules, restrictions, and opportunities to help their community. City financial support, the council at their last ma- meeting made a donation of $50,000 to One Life Counseling for its food program. We continue to provide $1,000 of additional support weekly to the Meals on Wheels program, serving our community. The Community Foundation has continued with their grant program, ramping it up a bit. $10,000 to There With Care, as well as St. Vincent de Paul, Star Vista, an additional $5,000 to One Life Counseling. $2,500 for Justice at Last, $4,500 for Arbor Bay School, $1,000 for the Carmont High School, and $2,000 for West Coast Songwriters Association. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions the council might have.
Ron, we can't hear you.
You're muted, Ron. Oh, sorry.
Now, I'm going to have to pay more attention to that. I apologize. Crystal, thank you for putting up the public comment slide. Has anybody called in that would like to speak on this item?
Yes, it looks like we do have two callers waiting. I'm going to go ahead and admit the first one.
All right, yeah, let's go with that.
Good evening caller, phone number ending in 034. Thank you for calling into the San Carlos City Council meeting. If you can please lower the volume of the meeting behind you. You will have approximately two minutes to address the council. If you'd like, please go ahead and state your name prior to proceeding with your comment. Thank you.
Thank you. This is John Keener from the 151600 block of Chusten in San Carlos. And just calling regarding the proposed concept of a safe, slower streets during the pandemic time. The one question or concern that we have is that I think it's a proposed one-block slow street. And the concern is that that would create a gathering place. And the reason we say that is that we're in the White Oak.
John, I apologize. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, that's actually an, an agenda item that's coming up. It's, it's our study session 9A and we'll be taking public comment at that time. Can you hang on a little bit and we'll take your comment?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, I'm not on, I'm not on the, the actual committee meeting, so I'm sorry. I didn't, I thought it was just to dial in and record comments that you could then have. Okay, so.
Right, this is just a comment on this particular item, but I, I welcome you to, to call back.
Okay. Do we have to watch the council meeting just to know when to call back in?
Well, let's see, we've got one more update and then we're going to be on that study session. So it might be 10 minutes, 15 minutes. It depends on, you know, questions from council and if there's any more speakers.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah.
No, no, no worries.
I tried to go on the web just to connect in, but let me see if I can get on the TV just so I know. Or call back in like 10 minutes or 15?
Yeah.
Or, yeah.
You want to keep your eye on the TV?
Yes.
I'll try to get it dialed in. I've never done. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Sorry about that.
All right, that's, we'll see you soon. It's my neighbor. I could go down and knock on his door and tell him you can call in. Crystal, we have another.
Yes.
Public comment?
Yes, I'll go ahead and admit them in right now. Good evening caller, phone number ending in 222. Thank you for calling into the May 11th San Carlos City Council meeting. Please lower the volume of the meeting behind you. If you, you will have approximately two minutes to address the council and please state your name for the record before proceeding. And you are currently unmuted.
Hi, this is Yord Kinderman. I have a comment also on the, the slow streets or pedestrian, Laurel Street pedestrian topic, which I think is coming up later.
Okay, so yeah, that, it won't be long.
Okay, great. So, so do I just stay on the same line until then?
Actually, if you could call in at that time, that, that would be a little bit easier to manage. We have a lot of.
I see. Okay, so just call in the same way I did it this time?
Yes.
Let me get there. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Yord. All right. Was there anybody else, Crystal?
No, there is nobody else calling in right now.
All right. So let us move to questions. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one question about a comment you were, when you were talking about the tennis situation. My question may be a little broader than tennis, but in situations where either the state or the county are allowing reopening, even if, and, and if they continue to require or do require onsite monitoring. Is it possible for us to have volunteer monitors or even hire people temporarily as, as monitors to, you know, for the duration of the emergency to have them fill that role if we have to do that? In other words, I guess what I'm getting at is if it's not too much money, even if we had to hire people, I'd hate to not be able to open something up just because we don't have a monitor sitting here. But I also don't want, you know, I don't want the chief to put his, his patrol people out there either because that would be ridiculous.
Yeah, we'll be looking in, we, we talked a little bit this afternoon at the staff level. You know, so we'll be looking into volunteers, maybe with the San Carlos Tennis Club or that, that type thing. We could, yes, always hire additional staff. Seems not quite sure I'd want to give some thinking to, you know, and incurring an ongoing expense for tennis courts. We also have bocce ball courts and basketball courts and a lot of other things that could potentially start to come online in this way. And our, you know, whether or not our ability to be able to do that will be sustainable. It's something that the council will have to consider down the road. But the volunteers is definitely something we're going to try to take a look at.
I'm, I'm glad to hear, I'm glad to hear that you're going to be looking at that. And again, just speaking for myself and in the absence of even knowing what the numbers might be, since you haven't, staff has, hasn't had a chance to look at them. I'm not adverse to, you know, spending some money if we are able to hire people temporarily, if we have to do that. Just because this is an unprecedented situation and I'm sure we've all heard or, or maybe experienced ourselves. People are sort of climbing the walls, so, you know, if we can do something to help make life a little easier for people, even offer them a few bucks, why not? Thank you.
Ron?
Sorry. Go ahead, Adam.
Thanks, Matt calls. I just a quick question. Jeff, you mentioned sort of the tenant assistance program that they've sort of started and take applications and it might be for the next meeting that you could give this. I just would want to understand kind of where the, the budget is for that and how that program is going a little bit. So you may not know more now, but if, if you have anything more to add, that's great. And if not, happy to wait till the next meeting.
Okay, I do, I don't have any additional detail for the council this evening, but we will, we'll continue to, to monitor it, which we have been. And as the data starts to arrive, we'll, we'll try to pull that together for your next meeting. Shouldn't be a problem as long as the, the program has progressed.
Great, thank you.
All right, Sarah?
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, when we were going through the presentation, I think slide 11 might have been skipped. And since it has to do with parks, I'm wondering if we could go back to that, just so that you can speak to it a little bit.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, this gets to some of the outdoor physical type activity that's being loosened up in the state and county health orders for folks to be able to get out and do things. Again, we can have gatherings of, of children recreating now up to 12, as long as they're following social distancing guidelines. There are no team activities or organized sports allowed, no sports that allow for, that do not allow for physical distancing. So sorry to the rugby players out there, but that's just not going to be happening for a while. Members of a single household can recreate together. So we're going to be going on the honor system there and, and trust that folks are going to be following all these rules. Basketball and bocce ball right now are not allowed, but I know it's, those are other activities that are being discussed to see if there'll be future changes like we've seen recently with golf and, and now tennis. And we're looking and monitoring all those changes to the extent that they impact our city parks and many of them do to try to make sure that we can provide the community with those opportunities in a reasonable way and in the safest way possible. So thanks for pointing out that we missed that one.
I noticed that, but I thought maybe you were intentionally skipping it. All right. All right, I, any other questions before we move on? Okay, we're going to move on to 8B, which is to get an update on the vegetation management program. This is going to be presented by Chuck Lacks. Hello, Chuck?
Good evening, Mayor Collins and members of the city council. How's everybody doing this evening? Give me a couple of minutes here while Crystal sets up my PowerPoint for me.
Sorry, my computer is freezing. Just a minute here.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, Chuck, you should have control of the, of the slide now.
Okay. All right. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to reassure you that we have not forgotten about our wildfire threat while we have been working on the COVID-19 pandemic. The San Carlos Fuel Reduction Program would not be possible without the collaboration of the Park and Rec Department, your Public Works Department, the Fire Department, and your Emergency Manager. So I've got a short presentation to show you what was accomplished in 2019 and what we're looking forward to accomplishing in 2020. Can you move the slide forward for me, Crystal?
There it goes.
So in 2019, we were able to use $100,000 from the city budget to clear 48 acres with goats, can't crews, and heavy equipment in Crestview Park, Eaton Park, Highlands Park, Vista Park, Arguello Park, Big Canyon Park, North Crestview Park, and in the La Mesa area. Here's some examples of some before and after pictures. Really what we were striving for was removing and thinning vegetation to be able to reduce the spread of wildfire. Next slide. Again, in Highlands Park, you could see a similar thinning and removing of dead vegetation to reduce the spread of wildfire. And in the next slide, the same thing occurred in Arguello Park. In the next slide, you could see the goats busy in Arguello Park. It seems to be very popular with everybody in San Carlos, as we'll see those returning to the hills in San Carlos shortly. So in 2020, we're looking forward to using the FEMA Fuel Reduction Grant we've received to maintain and improve upon the work that was accomplished in 2019. The goal again will be to focus in on Eaton Park, Big Canyon Park, Crestview Park, and Highlands Park. And we're going to focus again in removing and thinning vegetation deeper into those parks and around the perimeter of the park. The goal is to work on 100 acres in 2020. I'd be honored to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. Crystal, do we have anybody who called in for this item?
Yes, I do have one speaker on the line right now.
All right, why don't we go ahead and take that?
Good evening caller, phone number ending in 827. Thank you for calling into the city's council meeting. If you could please lower the volume of your meeting behind you. You will have approximately two minutes to address the council on this item. And if you'd like, please state your name prior to proceeding with your comment. You are currently unmute, so you may begin.
Hi, my name is Heather Kech, last name is K-A-E-C-H. And I called earlier to put in a few comments about the temporary closing of some streets. Are you guys to that agenda item yet?
We are, what, it's the very next item, Heather, so hang on.
Okay, should I just hold or call back?
I think you probably, Chris would like you to call back.
Yes, if you can call back and to follow along with the meeting, if you want to watch it on channel 27, if you have Comcast or channel 99 with AT&amp;T, or if you can watch it on our, our meeting web portal, then you can follow along and know when we're taking comments for item 9A.
Great, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sure, and Heather, are you, Heather, are you still there?
Yes.
All right, just, just before you go, just so you know, there's going to be, we're going to have a staff presentation that's, we're going to have three members of our staff making the presentation. And that, I don't know how long that'll take, so it might not be five minutes. It might, it could be more like 20 minutes, but I would not encourage you to get too far away from your TV or your computer.
Okay, I will, I'll track you guys, yeah, on the portal then. That sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, bye-bye.
Okay. Anybody else, Crystal?
No, there are, there are no other callers.
Okay. Questions of, of Acting Chief, Chief Lacks? I am not seeing any. Chuck, thank you again. It's important that we keep paying attention to our vegetation and what's happening with it. And nice to see goats in town, that's, where, where can I go to find those, just to watch?
They'll be in Arguello Park and up on La Mesa in another month.
Okay, that'll be, that'll be good to see. Okay. Now we're going to move on to item 9A. This is a study session. We're going to be talking about closing streets in San Carlos for social distancing, expanding block party regulations, and closing the north blocks of Wall Street to through traffic. For those who may be watching online, I would just sort, I'd like to outline the, how this is going to go. This, first of all, this is not an action item. We're simply going to be getting a staff report and talking about what things people are interested in seeing happen. We're going to have a staff presentation from three members of staff first. At that point, I'm going to ask our city clerk if we have a number of callers who are queued up. Normally, we take public comment before council asks questions. If there aren't any callers, I will take council questions first. I do suspect based on what's happened so far that we will have a number of callers. So I think it's probably going to be appropriate that we have public comment before we have questions by council. After that is done, we're going to have a discussion on, on what's, what's at hand here. And we're going to make some decisions about a subcommittee and what we're going to do subsequent to that. So with that, we're going to start with, I believe, Steve Machida. Are you first?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, city council members. I'm Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. Next slide. So what we're discussing tonight is actually closing those streets in San Carlos for physical distancing. So, Crystal, can you advance the slides, please? So the purpose of tonight's discussion is really to consider the closing of the streets to promote physical activity in residential neighborhoods, possibly using the city block party program. Consider possible temporary closures of the 600 to 800 blocks of Laurel Street, and then really obtain directions from the city council on how to move forward. Next slide, please. So we'll start first with this residential streets. Next slide. So as you were, the county health department ordered a shelter in place. So, as you were, the county health department ordered a shelter in place order due to the coronavirus, COVID-19. But what they were really also encouraging, even though we had a shelter in place, is encouraging residents to continue their physical activities such as biking, hiking, walking, jogging, et cetera. Unfortunately, because the sidewalks and streets have become more crowded, you know, residents were really finding it unable to kind of maintain that physical separation at some locations, and so therefore, they really wanted to see if there's an opportunity to do some closed streets like many other cities have done in California. So, next slide, please. So, we were really looking at utilizing a block party kind of permits or the guidelines. So, here you have the nine bullet points for block parties. So, I'll really quickly go through them. They're estimated, you need to spot your estimated attendance, you need to make sure the majority of the residents on the block agree to the closure of the street, you know, the area that's going to be affected, all activities have to be within the block, sidewalks, public spaces must remain open, no hazardous activities, no excessive noise, they must meet the noise guideline, and then you also need permission from the city engineer. So, as you notice, the guidelines really don't fit exactly what we're trying to accomplish as it relates to kind of physical distancing and allowing for people to kind of recreate. Basically, block parties are really intended for short duration, and so once you kind of get into a longer duration, the block parties are typically a half day, maybe a full day kind of event. Once you get into a longer duration, you know, say week or month, it does become a little bit confusing because you do have a lot of, you know, the road closure signs and people really don't understand fully exactly what the closure really is. Is it really a block party or is it really, you know, a street closure? So, anyway, just some of the things that, you know, Public Works looks at, and along with some of our other departments, is whenever we look at a residential street closure, we really look at kind of two things, you know, first of all, maintaining vehicle access and then maintaining system facilities. So, maintaining vehicle access, you could see the emergency vehicles, deliveries and residents. So, emergency vehicles, we highlight in red, I mean, that is really critical for us to actually maintain, make sure that, you know, our police and sheriff department have full access to any place on the street at any given time. So, basically, we need to make certain that whatever kind of closure is that we could actually open it up very quickly so that they could actually respond to that contingency. Then we're also looking at deliveries as it relates to, you know, grocery shopping, you know, pharmacy, pharmaceutical deliveries, your internet deliveries, you could maybe even have deliveries as it relates to moving into a new home or perhaps moving out of a new home. And then lastly, we want to look at the residents that they always have access to their homes, obviously to and from their homes at all time. Then we look at existing facilities. So, when we look at a block closure or block party closure, you know, really looking at local or residential streets, we really don't want to consider collector or materials, and you may ask the reason why. So, collectors or materials, we generally want to move traffic. Those are the kind of the major arteries, if you will, that gets you to and from, say, 101 or 280. And so, those we want to kind of continuously maintain access, so we don't really want to close those streets off. Then we also look whether that the streets that are being considered for a block party are, you know, is it on a bike route or pedestrian route? And then lastly, we would look at whether that block party is going to be on a street that has some type of bus or public transportation route. Some cases, as you may know, like when we, for instance, when we had the Ucalypta Street removal on San Carlos, we actually had to do some bus routes rerouting as a result because we had the cranes in San Carlos, and so we had to actually map out the appropriate sheets so the bus could actually go down and still make the appropriate turns. So, next slide, please. So, as I mentioned earlier, one of the major concerns that whenever we close any kind of street is that we always look at merchant response and what type of enforcement it's going to, we have to do. So, closed or limited access streets really increase the response time for fire, sheriff, or public works, and utility companies. It's pretty obviously with fire and sheriff, you know, why we don't want to increase their response time, but for the public works, say for instance, you do have a sewer overflow, you know, we want to respond very quickly to alleviate that problem, or if there's an utility company, you have a water main break that is broken in the middle of the street, you want to be able for them to respond very quickly and get to the site very quickly. The fire code requires a 20-foot emergency access, must be maintained at all times, and so essentially, that is the travel lanes down the middle of the street of a residential street, so that doesn't really include parking. When I think about a block party, now you think of people kind of having picnics, so they usually bring up canopies, tables, chairs, umbrellas, benches, and perhaps other, you know, private property within the street. Well, this is not quite exactly like that, but potentially that could happen, and so this is one of the concerns that I always have whenever we consider having a block party. And then lastly, the sheriff's office, you know, we will need the sheriff's office to actually help us to help monitor, to make sure that there is this 20-foot emergency access, and then providing type of education or perhaps enforcement of these closures, should that be necessary. Next slide, please. So, I just want to go real quickly on what the full street closures are. So, what we look at is, you know, as you can see in the photo, we've got these kind of plastic barriers, sometimes different wire, sometimes sand, but they can be concrete. These probably provide the best protection for pedestrians and bicyclists because it really kind of keeps the vehicles and bikes separate, separated, excuse me. And you know, downside is, it really kind of eliminates some of the street parking. Basically, if you're inside the barriers, you know, how do you get your car out, or how do you get your car back into the street? So, residents don't really, will not always have vehicle access. And then, this type of barricade also has problems in the sense that, you know, it's hard to get your delivery, your mail, your garden service, and even garbage service will be impacted because you do create barriers. So, from a full closure standpoint, the bike pedestrian utilization is probably the safest in that, again, as I mentioned, it really separates the vehicles from pedestrians and bikes, but from a public safety response perspective, probably this is not what we really want to do because it really doesn't provide that quick and immediate access and, you know, to a given street, should it be needed. Next slide, please. So, here we talk about partial street closures, and basically, this is probably what most of the other, and I'm coming up to a slide of some of the other cities that are going through this slow street program. So, partial streets closures, they essentially use movable barriers, basically responsibility, responsible entity actually is, we're supposed to remove and replace any of the barricades that are moved. Unfortunately, sometimes these are a little bit difficult to monitor and actually ensure compliance, I think, because mainly, these barricades do move around from time to time because people do move them. So, that would probably require either staff to kind of monitor, make sure that the street closures are maintained, but that also means the staff may have to forego other duties as assigned. So, the one thing I did really want to talk to you about is, you know, basically, a street is either fully closed or it's open. I mean, we do talk about partial street closures, but realistically, a partial street closure, that street is still open. You're going to allow deliveries, you're going to allow, you know, your local traffic, you're going to allow your gardeners and, you know, whomever visitors to go through. Unfortunately, because you're still allowing that traffic, even though it might be limited, that street is still open, and so it does kind of create a somewhat of false sense of security for those pedestrians and bicyclists that use that street because they assume that that street or block is actually closed, yet, you know, here comes the Amazon or, you know, internet delivery truck coming down, kind of looking for a specific address, not realizing there's a child or perhaps a bicyclist that's coming out of the driveway. And so, these are the really concerns. So, when I say a partial street closures, it really is a partial in the sense that this is how we would close it down, but it really is a street that's truly open. So, next slide. So, here's kind of a typical picture of what we see in the residential streets in San Carlos. Basically, you have the center area, and that would be essentially reserved for, you know, through traffic, but it's also reserved for the emergency vehicle. And again, as I mentioned, that's 20 feet. So, the pedestrian walkway is really kind of a 10 feet approximately on either side. It includes the sidewalk, and probably lane of where you would normally have street parking, but as you're probably well aware, certainly during this shelter in place, our streets are fully parked. And so, one of the things is, that means people who need to walk on the street, they're actually going to be walking within that emergency vehicle access, so it's a little bit concerning because as people kind of move around and you squeeze between the bumpers of each car, it's one thing if you're a pedestrian watching very carefully, however you're a smaller child, or somebody that maybe is not very clean, and you kind of dart in and out between bumpers, you know, vehicles may not be able to see them very quickly. Next slide, please. So, service impacts, again, I, you know, I kind of keep going over and over, but we have the local streets, local residential streets. Those service impacts are garbage questions, and this is going to be on a weekly basis that includes your recycle and your paper and debris, your home services and deliveries, basically, gardeners, your internet groceries, routine utility service, this could be your internet, your Comcast TV, phone, and it also will be affecting your parking, residential construction. So, these are the kind of items that, you know, we really do need to be concerned about whenever we're closing the streets. Next slide, please. So, I did a really quick inquiry of some of the other agencies within the peninsula. I think you probably know about Redwood City, I think San Mateo's doing a partial closure, City of Burlington is doing a pilot on a street closure, Hush City is doing a closure where they actually closed the street right adjacent to a trail, and obviously, every, probably most people know about Oakland and San Francisco doing some type of street closure, as well as City of Alameda. So, some of the cities that have not, are not considering that, at least now, there's Town of Coma, the City of Pacifico, Brisbane, South San Francisco, Belmont, Eagle City, and Town of Woodside. In my discussion with these agencies, most of them had indicated, you know, they're generally kind of smaller cities, they're suburban in nature, and so they really didn't feel that this was really needed for them at this time, and, you know, we're kind of in that kind of middle, where we're not 100% suburban, but we do have quite a bit of residential units. So, next slide, please. So, after consideration of kind of the major thing is our safety of our community and some of the bike pedestrian bicyclists, you know, one of the real concerns, from a staff perspective, we're really not recommending that we do local or residential street closures, you know, for this, I think, because mainly, we're really concerned about, you know, making the emergency access. It does create a false sense of security for pedestrian bicyclists, as I mentioned, there's no such thing as a partial closure of a street, it's either open or it's closed. We really feel that potentially this could encourage public gathering, and basically, this is inconsistent with the current health order, it will impact local parking, home delivery, mail, garbage service, and other services provided to the residents, and it does require constant monitoring to ensure proper street closure. I guess the one last thing I did want to make mention is, you know, I just really did a quick review of all the parcels, or most of our parcels in our community, and probably about, for the most part, about all parcels are maybe three quarters a mile or less, you know, from a developed park, a school, a field, or some type of trail. And as our parks are starting to, more of them are starting to be on the uptick or ramped up, you know, we're in preparation of going to see a lot more of this activity. So, what I'm trying to get at is, I think we're providing a lot of these activities, they're going to come online here shortly, I mean, assuming our health order is lifted, in which case, then we could see, you know, more people who are actually being outside and gathering, kind of using some of their other parks and trails that are available to them. So, next slide, please. So, that really concludes the residential side, and I'll go right into Laurel Street unless there's some other official questions that you want to talk about. So, the temporary closures of 600, 800 block of Laurel, basically, what we're looking for is to encourage pedestrian activities in the downtown, allow restaurants to serve more customers while practicing physical distancing once they can reopen. Basis businesses during this time, Wheeler Plaza Garage is available, and, you know, it's approximately 1,000 feet or so from mid-block of the mid-700 block of Laurel Street. That's just kind of the midpoint, if you will, like the between three blocks, 600 through the 800. Removal of street parking, and, you know, that's just one of the downsides, is by closing off the street, you're actually removing a lot of the street parking on Laurel as well as the accessible spaces. And one of the things that, you know, if we do decide to move forward, is that we'll have to do some preliminary extensive outreach and receive concurrence from all merchants on Laurel Street that, you know, this is something that they want to do. Next slide, please. So, this slide you probably saw a little bit, it's a little bit different than one of the residential, you know, again, we talked about making vehicle access, making distance facilities, and then, like, one third column, minimum size, impact. And so, I'll just really focus on that. So, minimize the impact is, you know, basically, if we're going to be closing a street, it will be impacting all the residential, or, excuse me, all the commercial or businesses along Laurel. You know, it will affect restaurants as well as other non-resident restaurants or eating type facilities, and it will also impact some of our community events that we might have, whether it's the farmer's market, you know, some of the other activities that we have, wine stall, some other things that we have in the downtown. Next slide. These are kind of the same photos I showed you earlier, the full street closure, full street closure devices as well as the mobile street closures, so, you know, we probably used something very similar. We also saw, see this slide once before, where, again, you know, we're taking emergency issues very, we look at it very importantly, we want to make sure that, you know, we comply with it, but basically, you know, we want to minimize or we want to make sure that the response time for our sheriff or maintain the 20-foot emergency access, we really don't want any street furniture, canopies, tables, et cetera, within the 20-foot road, and then the sheriff's office would actually help monitor and provide enforcement of these street closures. So, next slide, please. So, here's a picture of Laurel Street, and so, if you look at Laurel, basically, I guess the best way to put it is, from the two drainage valley betters, you know, that's approximately about 22 foot and west, so that's the area, essentially, is the travel lane of Laurel. So, that's the area that we would need to keep available for emergency vehicles. So, we have approximately a 14-foot pedestrian walkway that would prove the kind of angle as well as sidewalk on either side of the emergency vehicle access. If we, in fact, we were to close the 600 through 800 block, we would lose approximately, well, we'd lose 154 street parking spaces, and I believe there were six accessible, excuse me, accessible spaces on, in this street as well. So, you know, one of the concerns is, you know, that would be, you know, one thing is to kind of lose some of that parking, but we also wanted to look at, you know, are there other options out there that possibly could be evaluated? And so, we came up with the idea of looking at, you know, instead of closing Laurel Street, could some of our parking closets be converted over into kind of this area that some of the restaurants and commercial business could use? You know, basically, the city owns parking closets, so we would actually, in this case, this we Clark Plaza, what we could do is just barricade it out at the two driveways. Essentially, what this would do is would maintain Laurel Street for vehicle access. So, although parking would not be removed, on tree park would not be removed from Laurel, we would lose about 110 parking stalls in Clark Plaza, this is just an example, and it would probably impact the garbage and delivery service. So, you know, we could look at this as well as put up the surface lock near Wheeler Plaza Garage, that could also be an opportunity to have, instead of closing Laurel Street itself. So, we would have to kind of explore, explore that a little bit more closely. So, other options that we would consider other than a full street closure, is what if we considered like a limited, limited time closure of Laurel Street? Basically, it could be from late afternoon to early evening. Emergency access and deliveries would still be maintained at all times. One of the nice things about doing this is, you know, you can have the regular day-to-day activities kind of occur in the downtown and then closing off in the evening. And because you actually close down- And because you actually closed down Laurel, perhaps there could be a parking or valet program kind of instituted where instead of losing that parking in front of your your businesses, where where people cannot use them, you have a valet that could shuttle the car perhaps either to Wheeler Garage. And then allow them to come back and, you know, use the valet service to kind of drop off the car. The one downside of doing this for late afternoon to evening is you'd actually have a setup and take down every day. In which case, you know, one of the nice things about having a fully blocked street is sure you have to maintain it, but you don't have to move barricades around as much as every day. Excellent. So the fiscal implications, you know, what we see is that there's future costs to consider should put programs forward, what we want to, what is, you know, cost of setting issues, what it will really take. You know, what is the logistics to go through that we would need to calculate, what kind of materials we might need, the time that we need to to focus on making sure that it is safe. And together, we really need to kind of work with all the really departments, fire, police, parking wreck, planning. Conduct outreach and education for all the community as well as the businesses. We need to update our regulations moving forward, just to make sure that, you know, we can do all this. And in some cases, for instance, you know, I've talked to some colleagues where I believe this is San Mateo, San Mateo is actually considered Twenty Fifth Avenue, would be very similar to our Laurel Street. You know, one of the things I mentioned is how how would they be handling the liquor license if it were going to be the table or on the outside or in the parking area? You know, and that would be something that we have to consider both through the E B C to make sure it will be needed and and it actually be a thing. We would need to process the permanent application, preparing signage, interbar barricades, and then monitor activity enforcement regulations. So I I think, you know, maybe just to summarize, the next slide, listen. Really to sum up is, you know, the concern that I think from a staff perspective, we're really concerned about closing streets for residential, I think, as I mentioned, it's mainly for safety. But for from the Laurel Street program, I think there's various options that, you know, council could consider and, you know, entertain kind of your direction on, you know, what you wish us to proceed with. So the options that are available to council is to provide feedback and direction on possible street closures and any type of invitation that you would like us to look at and then provide or provide alternate direction. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, Steve, before we continue, I I had a note here that we were gonna possibly hear from Elsavay and Chief Dury is that they want to weigh in before we take public comment? Or are they therefore backup for you for questions?
I believe they're backup for questions.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't overlooking some part of the presentation that they might be anticipating making.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Steve. Mr. I assume we have some members of the public who wish to speak?
Yes, I do see one person in the queue at this moment. I'll go ahead and
Oh, just one?
For now. So we'll go ahead and admit this caller in first.
All right.
Good evening, caller, telephone number ending in two two two. Thank you for your patience in calling back. You will have approximately two minutes to address the council. And if you could, please state your name before proceeding with your public comment.
Thank you. This is York Heineman. I live on Glasgow Lane up by Highlands Park. I'm really excited to see the council considering both of these topics. I'm a strong supporter both of Laurel Street temporary closure as well as slower streets. For for a number of reasons. First of all, I think the safety concerns, I think we all share those. I think the communities that have already adopted these also have those same concerns as do the many cities throughout the world. You know, a number of, you know, European cities, in fact, all the major European cities have implemented things like what we're considering and actually even even, you know, more significant and permanent solutions over time. So while I I respect the challenges that those bring, I I think there's a lot of precedent that that these have been solved and that we can also solve those. I I encourage us to think a little bit longer term. This COVID nineteen impact is going to hit us for at least a couple of years. And the Laurel Street shutdown in particular, giving the opportunity for restaurants to add outdoor seating with more physical distance is probably the difference between life and death for many of our restaurants on Laurel. The science, at least as I, you know, what I'm seeing, I think is going to tell us that outdoors trumps indoors by a lot. And and that's going to, you know, add to the safety factor and the, you know, the feeling that people get that that physical distancing and being safe in restaurants and patronizing those can be accomplished much more readily if we simply give them more space. And asking restaurants to just operate at twenty five percent capacity, anyone that knows anything about the restaurant industry is going to realize there's no way that math works. So we've got to find a way to help them expand their physical space. And then just just thinking more broadly, you know, shutting down Laurel Street, taking a few cars off that road and a few parking spaces and instead allowing it to be, you know, pedestrian traffic, bring more, will bring more people to, you know, to into our businesses. Think about, you know, other areas around the world that have done this, the Third Street Promenade in Santa Monica, for example. Virtually every city in Europe in the last ten to twenty years has slowed their car traffic massively, taken it down to twenty miles an hour or less in most streets. And made it easier for bikes and pedestrians to get around. And the the impacts socially and economically have been phenomenal. And in the long run, address the concerns that we're all feeling around parking and congestion and so forth, simply by helping incentivize folks to get out of their cars. And instead, you know, find ways to walk and ride their bikes and so on. So anyway, thank you for listening and thank you for considering this. I'm I'm hopeful we can get something like this done, at least as a temporary test to see how it pans out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, York. Crystal, do we have another public comment?
Yes, we have. We have three people lined up, so I'll go ahead and admit the next caller.
Hey, Crystal, be before we do that, do we have any mechanism for displaying a timer on the screen? Otherwise, I I have one here that I could use.
I can't put it on the screen, but I can set it up so that the caller can hear the the beeping sound when it's thirty seconds coming up.
That would be, that would be great. And yeah, we should probably talk about an onscreen timer for the future.
Okay, we'll go ahead and try the beeping sound. So the next caller is caller with the phone number ending in zero four zero. Thank you for calling into the San Carlos City Council meeting.
Hi, everybody. I'm here. It's Mark Brownhouse. I'm on Devonshire, a twenty six year resident. And the last caller was articulate and I share the same kinds of views. I totally support Slow Streets Initiative and and closing part of Laurel. I actually think other cities have addressed these issues, and so I would encourage the council to explore the art of the possible. What have other towns done in San Mateo, Brooklyn City, Mountain View, as well as across the nation in Europe and even our places? Paris, New York City, San Francisco have done things like this. And we don't have to go that far. The local towns have solved a lot of the issues that were raised. But gosh, let's go, this is the time to go make this city a good living. Kind of move forward in this in this space, and I think others have paved the way. And actually, I think maybe we're looking at the safety issue upside down a little bit related to the previous caller's comments. With COVID, our the our streets, certainly when I walk and run around town, the streets are full of people on bikes and scooters and walking. And they're sort of disregarding cars and just being out in the middle. And sometimes I actually worry about it. I think we have a safety issue right now. And thank goodness, we're all being a little safer and carefuler as we drive, I think. But there's just a lot of people already in the streets and we better figure out how to enable that with a slow street type of initiative that gives people fair warning in places where there may be a lot of people out and about. And that can be done still with emergency services in place and so on. But we need to enable safety, and I think the previous caller is exactly right. This virus crisis is likely to go on for a year or two until vaccines are fully deployed and and working on and off. So the people in the streets are going to be there and certainly downtown isn't going to be able to recover unless, I think of Pete's with its line out the front door and people with sort of front door business models and street pickup and restaurants that need to be able to space out onto a big wide sidewalk and not worry about parking spaces and cars. And I don't think we'll have it downtown unless we enable people to be able to walk and bike. And and still for older and disabled people, be able to park at Caltrain or on Walnut Street, very, very close by. But I I think we're in a different world now. We've got to figure out how to enable the kind of safety and the kind of traffic that and space that downtown is going to need to be able to recover. So I sure hope that you will look at the art of the possible and learn from other cities. And let's go try, do a trial until October on both of these initiatives. And I think we'll be a better city for it, frankly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Crystal, we have another caller?
Yes. Good evening, caller with a telephone number ending in five nine eight. Thank you for calling into the San Carlos City Council meeting. You will have two minutes to address the council. And when your two minutes is up, you will hear a beeping, so if you can wrap it up at that time, that would be appreciated. Caller ending in five nine eight, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, please introduce yourself and then you may proceed.
Okay, Honorable Mayor Collins and Honorable City Council members, my name is Andrew Shu. I'm a San Carlos resident. I live on Bayview Drive in the hills. I'm father of three, avid bicyclist, and also, incidentally, a member of the Board of Directors of the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition. So just like Mark and York before me, I'm calling to speak enthusiastically to voice my support for Slow Streets Network in San Carlos. I realize that cities currently discussing, you know, a couple of implementations of and feasibility of implementing the Slow Streets Network, and I urge city council to act quickly. Many of our neighboring cities, including Redwood City, Foster City, San Mateo, Burlingame, have already safely done so. And of course, you already know about Oakland, San Francisco, Portland, New York City, Madrid, and Seattle soon to be permanent Slow Streets Network. So there must be a wealth of information to address the safety concerns that have already been raised. As you already know, due to COVID nineteen shelter in place, there are few cars on the road and people, especially kids, are out on the streets in record numbers. So everyone already has this false sense of security that our streets are empty, hence safe. However, creating an actual Slow Streets network in what I guess would be called a partial street closure implementation will communicate expectations for no through traffic and how local and essential car traffic can share selected roads that are on this network. For example, such rules as limiting car speeds to fifteen miles per hour and restricting street parking will, you know, set expectations for both drivers and for other users of the street. And this way pedestrians, joggers, bicyclists, and children can feel safe to use the road alongside local and essential vehicles. So please, take the opportunity during this otherwise difficult pandemic to do some good for our community and your respective legacies. We owe it to ourselves and our children to create a community with a network of Slow Streets. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Crystal, do we have another caller?
Yes, we have two more callers. Good evening, caller, ending in eight two seven. Thank you for calling into the San Carlos City Council meeting. You will have two minutes to address the council. I'll go ahead and start your timer as soon as you introduce yourself. And once your two minutes is up, you'll hear a beeping, and if you can wrap it up at that point, we would really appreciate it. You are currently on mute, so you may begin.
Yes, hello?
Yes, hi.
Yes, hi. My name is Heather Keck, and I was calling in in hopes that the council would reconsider their decision regarding the partial street closures. I just wanted to speak to that.
Okay, yes, please proceed.
Okay, great, yes. So I know that myself and my neighbors, we were discussing this earlier this afternoon, and we are very much in favor of making the partial street closures an option. And I appreciate the concern, the safety concern the council has brought up about a false sense of security. And I think, well, I know particularly on our streets that we as parents would remain vigilant to supervise our kids and obviously ourselves to make sure that we're not putting anyone, ourselves or anyone else, at danger, at risk. I think right now it would almost, as other people have mentioned previously, I think it would actually work in favor of promoting safety. I think any kind of signage or, you know, blocks that are up would indicate to drivers to be cautious, to be on alert. I feel like oftentimes those who are passing through come very quickly down the street with little regard to pedestrians or who might be potentially near the street. And so I think that would cause a warning for drivers. And I also wanted to just speak to the to the point somebody made in regards to parks and schools potentially reopening in the near future in terms of that would be a place where children and families could go to recreate. And and yet there's still obviously the concern or the awareness of not wanting to have massive social gatherings. And so I I'm just concerned that as those places open, if we don't have the opportunity to utilize our streets and our own neighborhoods, that those locations will become quite impacted. And so it just seems to make more sense to me if we can utilize the space that we actually have within our neighborhood. That there would be smaller, you know, groups of safe socializing going on on our own streets versus kind of, you know, the masses gathering once there's things lifted off of school campuses and trails and those types of things. So, yeah, those are a couple of my thoughts that I wanted to share.
Okay, well, thank you, Heather.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Crystal, another caller?
Yes, we have two more in the queue. Caller ending in phone number seven one five. Thank you for calling into the San Carlos City Council meeting. You will have two minutes to address the council. I'll start the timer after you introduce yourself. Once your two minutes is up, you will hear a beeping, so if you can wrap it up at that point, that would be great. You are now on mute and you may begin.
Hey, good evening. My name is Andrew. I live on Hall Street in greater east San Carlos. I wanted to call in and just let you know that I fully support whatever we can do to make San Carlos more pedestrian and bike friendly. I have a small child, for example, that I push around in a stroller, and it's pretty hard to get around people on the sidewalk and kind of still maintain a safe distance. So I I like the idea of closing the streets. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the idea of a more permanent street closure for Laurel Street. I grew up in Boulder, Colorado, which has a downtown mall, which is pedestrian only called Pearl Street, and it was a really wonderful place, both for business, like very thriving business area, as well as a wonderful place for like families and people to hang out. So just wanted to let you both, let everyone know that. So thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Crystal, I think you said we have another caller?
Yes, we have our last one here. Good evening, caller, ending in two seven seven. Thank you for calling into the San Carlos City Council meeting. You will have approximately two minutes to address the council, and I'll go ahead and start the timer after you introduce yourself. And once your two minutes is up, you'll hear a beeping, and if you can start to wrap it up at that point, that would be great. You are now on mute, so you may begin.
Hi, this is John Rethens. I live on Britton Avenue. I've been a San Carlos resident since two thousand and seven. I've got two small kids, ages eight and five. And during this quarantine, we've spent an enormous amount of time riding bicycles and scooters around town. And I'm just calling to voice my support for, you know, the street closure or slowdown concept. I think, you know, folks, well meaning folks have mentioned, you know, there may be a safety concern about setting expectations. But any of us who've been out in the road and the streets of San Carlos during this quarantine have noted that they're full of people on bicycles and scooters and kids and and older folks as well. I also regularly people on bicycles and scooters and kids and older folks as well. I also regularly jog around. And as someone pointed out earlier, it's really tough to, you know, keep everybody on the sidewalk when you're also trying to be responsible and maintain social distance. So I think that, you know, a move like this would simply be recognizing the reality of what's already going on. And if anything, add, add an element of safety by setting some expectations around roads and how a car should be behaving on them. The other item to keep in mind is, you know, there has been this bike plan process that's been going on for many, many months already. I'm familiar with the process of participating to the community days. And there's some great ideas that are in there. But, you know, if we've identified some paths that the bike, you know, the bike consultants have identified as major thoroughfares for San Carlos, you know, why not start there? I mean, I don't think we have to start from scratch. We certainly can leverage the work they've done to test out some of these ideas. And finally, also would be a huge proponent of a shutdown of Laurel Street for all the reasons folks have mentioned. So just want to add a voice in favor of that idea as well. Certainly, you know, doing things, taking advantage of this really unfortunate time that we have to test out some new things, even if in a few months, things hopefully, you know, can open up and we're in a much better space of a society with regards to COVID, we will have learned some very valuable things about traffic patterns and pedestrian behavior and bicycle behavior in the city. So again, I really think this is a great opportunity to, you know, improve safety for cyclists and pedestrians throughout the city and really do something a little bit different. That's all I got.
Thank you, John. I understand we have one more caller?
Actually, it looks like two more callers now.
Two more callers.
Two more callers.
Popular subject.
Caller, phone number ending in 034. Thank you for joining us for the City Council meeting tonight. You'll have approximately two minutes to address the council, and I'll go ahead and start the timer after you introduce yourself.
Great.
And once your two minutes is up, you'll hear a beeping. And if you can wrap it up at that point, we'd appreciate it. Okay, so you're currently on mute. If you want to go ahead and proceed. Caller number 034, can you hear me?
Yes, this is John Keener from the 151600 block of Chestnut in San Carlos. And I'm in favor of both the Laurel extension concept and also, to a certain degree, the biking component for safe streets. The biggest thing is, right now, I think we have a proposal for our specific block to be a pilot, and it's only one block in my understanding. And my concern from that standpoint is that it will lead to some of the studies that were shown of potential social gathering. We have White Oak School right around the block on the other side, and that's an opportunity for people, but not used right now because of COVID. So we would be wondering if it would make sense to make a larger project, and that would be part of the study. But under the current structure, I think it's just a one-block pilot, that that doesn't really make sense for the conditions with COVID of making it accessible and a thoroughfare. So something that's larger scale, and that would be part of the study. So just wanted to share those thoughts. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, John. We still have just one more, or are there others?
I see our last one here.
Okay.
I'm not going to admit them in. Good evening, caller with a phone number ending in 632. Thank you for joining us with the City Council meeting tonight. You will have approximately two minutes to address the council, and I'll start the timer after you introduce yourself. And once you start hearing the beeping, that means your two minutes is up. And if you can wrap it up at that point, we would appreciate it. And you are now on mute, so you may begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, this is Sonia Elks, and I wanted to thank everybody for being so eloquent and presenting so much useful information to our residents, council, everyone. I am definitely in favor of a Slow Streets pilot project to try it out in San Carlos, definitely in favor of a pedestrian zone on Laurel Street that would connect to each other. I think I was the one who petitioned the city to designate our block of Chestnut, 151600 block, as a Slow Street, although I want to make it extraordinarily clear that the goal was never to have a block party. It was just that's the only form that was what I was encouraged to use to modify. So I think the most helpful for allowing people to exercise safely in a socially-distanced way that respects the pandemic situation is routes, connected routes, and especially loops, kind of a motion, something that encourages motion and not stagnation or gathering. We're definitely, no one wants to encourage gathering. It's definitely about exercising and moving people in safe ways. No kid wants to bike up and down the street indefinitely, but they will go around a loop for a long time because it's great exercise and it's essentially a moving meditation. Biking, walking, running, they are all moving meditations. They calm nerves, they strengthen immune systems, they relieve anxiety, and they make us better able to focus and handle adversity, illness included. Biking, I think, might even be the world's most practical source of instant joy from a mental health perspective. I think this is a more important time than ever to get people out biking, walking, running, rolling, wheelcharing. I saw people in wheelchairs on Mother's Day yesterday, out pushing their elderly parents and their small children. It was unbelievable. And I'd love to have the Mother's Day conditions that we had yesterday specifically in, you know, in certain areas of San Carlos, not everywhere. I don't think that's realistic. People need to move in cars. That's totally understandable. But to, to, you know, to select certain streets that are more accessible for people to roll in the street and still being careful, obviously, of emergency vehicles. Nobody should be in the street if there's an emergency vehicle coming by. You know, we can, we can work on ways to educate our population and keep people doing a good job. But I really think mental health, especially in this anxious times, is a particularly important reason to consider a Slow Streets movement and a pedestrian zone on Laurel. So thank you. That's my perspective. I've probably forgotten something, but you can always email me. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Sonia. Crystal, are there any other speakers?
I believe that she was our last one.
Okay. Well, I'm sure we probably have some questions of staff. So I am entertaining whoever wants to raise their hand and ask away. I'm not seeing any yet. Adam, go ahead.
Let me unmute here. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Collins. Thanks for the presentation, all the public comments as well. I had a couple of questions. I don't know. I guess, Stephen, I guess for you, one of the questions I had is you, as you look at this way, and I understand you don't want to put anything permanent in there, but were you suggesting that pedestrians weren't going to walk down the street on a regular basis if we did that kind of closure, that you were?
I'm sorry, Councilmember. I think you froze up on my screen a little bit. I didn't catch the first part of your question.
You were suggesting, on the diagram, you sort of had a pedestrian walkway on each side, and then you were sort of had that emergency vehicle area open. But it was unclear to me whether you were suggesting that we were, would not allow or encourage people to walk in the middle of the street on Laurel. Understanding, obviously, if there's an emergency, then people would get out of the way. But I just want to understand what sort of you're proposing on that, what you were suggesting.
Well, you know, one of the concerns that I had is certainly if, you know, you would take that kind of a block to party thought, where you would actually put, you know, whatever, I mean, in the travel way. And that's the thing that certainly would not encourage. Obviously, you know, what we have seen on our community, people are walking, and then essentially, if they come up to somebody coming in the opposite direction, many instances, they cross the street and go on the opposite side of the sidewalk. I mean, basically, you know, what I really would want to encourage is people to stay on the sidewalk. That's where pedestrians are kind of the most safest. And so if you, you know, do walk in the street, certainly, there's always that possibility that, you know, you come up with a situation where people, car coming up from behind you, you don't hear. You know, you could be on your cell phone kind of texting or on a phone call, and you just don't hear somebody coming from behind you. So that's kind of an issue for us is, you know, I prefer to keep people on sidewalks as best you can. And certainly, I have seen people and joggers, in fact, certainly lately with the shelter in place where people are walking in the middle of the street.
Stephen, I'm sorry. Let me just, I guess I should clarify that. What I'm speaking about is more if we had a full closure of Laurel Street, it looked like on the diagram that you were suggesting that people wouldn't walk down the middle of the street?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
That's okay.
So in regards to Laurel, no. I mean, basically, you know, what I would envision is that area would be used for pedestrians. So, you know, where people could actually walk and stroll, I would guess probably, you know, assuming they're a restaurant adjacent to, you know, those sidewalks are probably going to be very busy as a result of this waiter, waitstaff kind of serving the tables in the street. So I would envision kind of the streets, at least in Laurel, would actually be, people would actually be in the center of the street. But we would also, also have kind of a barricaded off. So basically, there would be no cars tempting to go into the Laurel Street.
Right. And then I just have two very quick follow-ups on that. So I'm assuming for, you know, the accessible parking that we might at least lose, is it possible to just have some temporary, if we kept Cherry and Olive open or something, that we could add some temporary accessible parking to kind of help meet that need?
That's always a possibility, you know, or you, you know, do some, some different type of striping, perhaps even in our city, city parking process.
Okay. And then just last, I assume we're going to have comment later, but my last question is, you know, on the, I get the concern about some of the residential streets and things, but could you look at something like, I guess it'd be interesting, your thoughts around, like if we closed on a Sunday, Old County or one of the streets over there and let that sort of be a place where people could go and walk and, and ride bikes. It's sort of less trafficked, or, you know, some of those father's businesses are closed, and there's arteries around there. Is that, would you look at that differently if we could sort of put, let's sort of a Sunday barrier around some of those places?
Well, certainly, we probably want to look at that. I mean, if you know it's kind of a non-traditional workday, where you kind of close, I mean, something that you might see in like Golden Gate Park, where you could close off the street, again, kind of getting kind of, kind of concurrence from kind of local residents and/or businesses that, you know, they have no objection to doing it like one day away, probably on a non-working day. You know, that certainly is a possibility.
Okay, great. Thank you, Stephen.
Okay, Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. So this question is for Mayor, Chief Jury. And what I wanted to understand is, you know, since shelter in place has been, you know, guiding us, I've been out doing a lot of walking, and I see a lot of people, you know, moving and not a lot of cars. And I'm just wondering, what has the accident rate gone up or gone down with, since we've been in shelter in place?
The accident rate has gone down because there's less cars on the road. We've had some accidents, but most of them have been minor. But the accident rate has gone down because the volume of traffic has moved down.
All right. And then as we, as the economy reopens and more cars, right, more people going to work, what is your expectation in terms of what, what will likely happen given the current orders and our limited activities and that type of thing? Do you have a sense of that?
As far as accidents?
Correct, yes.
It'll be with more cars on the road, there'll be, there'll be a very good possibility that accidents will go up. Our traffic program will still be the same. Well, it's suspended now, but once we open it up again, it'll go back in place as it was before this COVID crisis started.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Stephen, thank you for the, the report. Really appreciate the thoroughness of it. One thought that I had, you know, there's certain events that happen on occasion, right? We're in, in our community, we have a 5K, the elementary or the middle school used to do this. And the last public comment Sonia made with respect to this idea of loops, you know, creating loops and routes, would the team feel more comfortable if, for example, we were to do it similar to what, where you would, you know, create certain routes throughout the residential community, but do it on, you know, selected days maybe of the week for a period of time, similar to what we have up at Kenyatta Road, but maybe through the, you know, lower, the flats of San Carlos, where you could allow bikes and pedestrians and walkers to move in a single direction and not make it a competition, right? Because you want to avoid kind of gathering and official start time, but.
You know, that is something certainly we probably want to consider. You know, I think the, you would still have to have a certain amount of barricades and closures, you know, that which could impact, you know, various collectors or arterials, you know, and cross traffic. In other words, you probably have to have a bigger plan, kind of know exactly where you're going to route vehicular traffic so that you keep kind of pedestrians and bikes kind of separated. That's certainly a possibility, but I mean, I think there's additional planning that we have to kind of evaluate, you know, to do those, those type of things that you're talking about.
Right. Well, I'm just thinking if it was more of an event-based type of effort, you know, since we're not going to obviously have music in the park this summer or some of these other things, and if there's an interest in the community to try and find outlets to exercise, perhaps we could think about it on a temporary basis, you know, certain.
Certainly, that's a possibility, and you're probably, you know, happy to kind of evaluate that as part of the direction that council goes.
Well, I assume she's finished at the moment?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it froze up. So I'm done with my two questions.
Thanks. Sarah?
Thank you, Mayor. My question, my first question is for Chief Jury. I'm just wondering if he could share his opinion on the Slow Streets. I'd just like to hear from you personally.
Yes, I'm not in favor of the, the Slow Streets. It really creates a false sense of security, especially people that are walking around. They think that no cars will be coming through. We can't completely shut the streets down because emergency vehicles will have to go through there. And it's difficult for us to police that. And then people will, that will be entering the street that actually live on that street, but then people will also go down the street that don't really have business there, will still use it as a thoroughfare. And it's tough for us to police that. We can't be there all the time to police that specific street. And I know that could be an expectation, but it's, it's unreasonable for us because we have a city to police. And then a lot of people are using these electronic devices, the earbuds and stuff, and that even gives them a false sense of security walking down the street, and you can't hear traffic coming up behind you. And then, you know, people let their children play and have the false sense of security to go inside or, or maybe not watch them as much. And it really creates a burden. I think it's a risk versus reward, and I really think there's too much risk in the Slow Streets program.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate hearing from you on that topic. I have two other quick questions. I'm wondering if anyone on staff has taken a look at Redwood City's Slow Streets and, and how that's looking in person? Anybody share?
Good evening, Mayor Collins and council members. Amy Newby here. As some of you know, I live in Redwood City, and in the last few weeks of actually just driving through different neighborhoods, have passed at least four of the streets that are closed off, if not five or six. It's been either during the week or weekends, mornings during the day. And every time I make it a point to look and see, are these closed streets being used? And I have yet to see anyone utilizing them to their purpose.
Okay, thank you, Amy. I appreciate that feedback. And then my other question, I think, might be for Greg, and this is changing the topic over to Laurel Street and the loss of parking. I know that's a concern in the community of losing the parking on Laurel Street. And I seem to recall that the city was negotiating with the Samtrans Building potentially parking in And I seem to recall that the city was negotiating um with the Sam Trans building, potentially parking in that area, in that garage. Um another caller tonight mentioned Caltrain parking. Um I'm wondering if you could just speak to where we are. Um I'm looking at those those different options.
Yeah, I believe we do have an agreement um for the Sam Trans building now. Um and uh there is, there is an agreement um related to the uh the Trestle uh project and the the uh Transit Center, um where there's some evening parking in the Caltrain parking lot. Um that's available for public use in the evenings. So there have been some things that the city has done. I'm not sure um and Steve or or Al could probably speak to whether, how how well they're being utilized, but I I I am aware of those agreements. Um so they're probably part of the things that we want to look at is the availability of of that parking uh and uh how uh how much it's available for for use during peak periods.
We we might ask Al the way in here as well.
Sorry about that. I'm just trying to uh get my computer to work here. Uh yeah, so we do um have an agreement with Sam Trans. Actually, we're working on a completing a long-term lease for the upper floor of the Ca- Sam Trans parking garage. There's about fifty to sixty parking spaces, and a number of the businesses in the downtown are aware that um that parking is available for the public. Um and then across the street from Cherry Street, we uh negotiated as part of the Trestle project, a hundred parking spaces for use in the evening from 5:00 PM or 6:00 PM on for the public and on the weekends uh during regular business hours. Um we're still talking to Sam Trans about the memorandum of understanding, but we should be able to bring that to the city council in the very near future. But it wouldn't be for for that particular parking area, it wouldn't be for um regular business hours. That wasn't negotiated as part of the original agreement.
Okay, great. Thank you, Al. That's my last question.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. Uh Mark?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I may have anticipated raising my hand. I would, I wanted to make a comment or to start the discussion after we get through Q and A. So uh if you can keep me in mind for that, that would be great.
Okay. Um I will, I would do want to have a discussion about this, but I think this might be a perfect time. Take a five-minute break. And uh Crystal, can we pause this meeting for five minutes?
Yes, we'll go and do that. Thank you.
All right. Well, I'll see you all at at nine o'clock even. Uh I'm I'm thinking that maybe our comments discussion should be centered around what sort of uh direction or or items that the subcommittee should be thinking about. Uh but I'll be interested in hearing um everybody's opinion on that and uh, you know, and and obviously, the subcommittee will have staff input. So I think it's probably a good idea to keep that in mind as well. So uh anybody in particular want to start off this discussion?
Sure.
Mark, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um and I like your idea about putting us in the context of a subcommittee. We still have to vote on that yet, but it can set up. Um I I just wanted to say a couple of things. Um you know, I I initially, I think, was one of the people who brought up the idea of closing streets, residential streets for various purposes. Um uh as things evolved, uh I actually shifted much more towards the idea of, I really liked the idea of the Slow Streets program for a bunch of different reasons. Um that's not to rule out perhaps closing some streets. I think it was either Laura or Adam we're talking about. There may be some specific long stretches of streets that we should think about closing, you know, uh as 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 yet another fillip in this whole thing, and I certainly would support that if if we can have it make sense. Um but one of the comments that one of the callers made, one of the callers made, I thought was very, very on target, which is we need to recognize the reality of the situation we're in, okay? There are a lot more people and bicyclists out on the streets. Um I see that when Barbara and I are walking around. I see it when we're sitting on our porch in the morning. There's just a lot more, there's a lot more pedestrian and bicycle traffic than there ever was before. Um and in a sense, in that sense, the Slow Street program to me, besides being a nice thing for pedestrians and and bicyclists, it actually is a way of teaching drivers, like, hey, wait a minute, guys, the world has changed. Um you know, on this street in particular, you need to pay real close attention to what's going on. Don't drive so fast. Um and I like that. I think that's a really good idea. Um I had a chance to talk to uh Joe Gothles of San Mateo and to uh Alicia Aguirre uh from Redwood City uh about this. Um and they they've had, you know, they they adopted this, these programs earlier than we're talking about doing, and they really like them. And more importantly, the residents really like them, and they haven't run into any significant problems that would cause them to rethink things. Um so, you know, I think that's another another thing in in their favor. Um and then lastly, on the the downtown Laurel Street experiment, um I'd love to see us actually do that. I appreciate staff coming up with the idea of maybe doing it in the parking lots instead of on Laurel Street, but I frankly think that's a non-starter. Um and we closed Laurel Street for all sorts of reasons. Like I think if we it go through and incur the cost of going, you know, opening and closing on a daily basis, which admittedly is non-trivial, uh uh so we're not permanently closing it, I think it would be a reasonable thing to think about doing. Um and one last point I'd make about that is, I do think it's important that we involve the chamber to kind of interface with all of the businesses, not just the restaurateurs. Um but I think we ought to, you know, the subcommittee ought to think about whether or not, when we close Laurel, that section of Laurel Street down, that we offer the uh non-restaurant business owners the opportunity to sort of do a little bizarre-like type arrangement. In other words, let them use some space in front of their store to display their wares, okay? Um lots of cultures do that. Uh you can get overrun with it, but lots of cultures do it, and lots of people love it. So I think there are ways to solve those kind of problems. So I'd love to see us adopt slow slow streets. I'd love to see us try and find some other roads that we can close down, like Adam and Laura were talking about, and I'd love to see us do the experiment um on Laurel Street, see how it works out.
Okay. Um Adam, what are your thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Thanks for the comments. And uh Mark, I hadn't thought about that, that sort of the other businesses being able to put some stuff in front of their stores, so that's a a good idea. I had not we've been focused so much on the restaurants. So um I think I'm in favor of of uh the Laurel Street piece. It's something that, I mean, for me, I I've talked about before, and I think it's a great opportunity to try to pilot that. Um I I think keeping sort of those side streets of Cherry and Olive open, and obviously, some of the details can be worked out through the um uh through the subcommittee. But um and I also think that, you know, we've got some opportunities to look at, you know, consider things like the farmer's market and where that might go, and you know, are there alternative locations for that potentially and how we work through those details? And uh I agree, I don't, I don't think using the parking lots is something that I'm uh interested in doing to have those be closed. I'd rather have those be for parking and have the street be closed. Um I am interested in sort of thinking outside the box a little bit about how we might help some of the restaurants in, like on San Carlos Avenue, and you know, could could we utilize, you know, other spaces for the for those restaurants? Or is there some temporary solution for them as well, or, you know, other, is is this, if we were to move forward with this, other parts of Laurel on South Laurel that maybe, you know, those businesses might need some some support as well. Um and then in terms of the Slow Streets, I mean, I I I I struggle with this because I hear some of the challenges, and we've got a lot of narrow streets, and I I, you know, I I I think I'd be more interested, you know, if we could do a Sunday pilot somewhere or maybe on a a larger street, or find some wider streets that might be considered, but um I I think I'd also just want to understand a little more, because I've heard uh I too talked to some of the city council members in in some of the other towns that are doing that and got sort of some mixed results, a mixed uh response um from both San Mateo and Foster City did it differently because they have a a four-lane street with parking, and they got rid of parking and just gave up one one lane on that street. So it's sort of a different uh kind of program. Um so that's kind of, I guess, where I am right now uh in terms of these things.
Okay, um Laura.
Thank you, Mayor Collins, um and thank you to all of the residents who uh wrote and shared your perspectives uh with respect to this particular topic, your ideas and concerns. Um from my perspective, um I'm glad to hear that there's a proposed subcommittee uh to meet on this because uh as we heard from residents, you know, now is the time, and um I think we need to be expeditious and thoughtful about this, so um I'm hopeful uh that we can agree uh to bring that uh team together to to move forward on this. Um where I stand in the moment with respect to residential street closures, I'm aligned with um trying it out on a temporal basis with a pilot uh certain, you know, a certain day of week or more of an event base to see um how that works, as opposed to shutting down um, you know, permanently for an extended period of time, particular routes throughout the community. Um I think at this point in time, there's just not enough data, and I appreciate other communities have done it. Uh but again, I sp- I've been spending a lot of time walking through San Carlos the last month, and many of these streets are very narrow. Um and I worry about uh the impact on those streets that um aren't closed, that are adjacent to the closed ones with respect to to the traffic congestion, parking congestion, because again, so many people are at home. There's a lot of cars parked on the sidewalk. Um so I would um be in favor of looking at um some sort of midway point, if you will, uh for a residential street closure event-based type effort. Um and with respect to Laurel Street, uh I think that uh one of the concerns I've had just in general is with the social distancing requirements that are going to be placed on businesses, how in fact are they going to be able to manage this as the economy reopens? And again, just walking down the sidewalks of Laurel, I see one business's uh colored tape uh running into another business's colored tape, right? So if the, you know, restaurant has a queue for takeout, and then there's a retail location that also has to have the queue, where are all those folks going to go? Um I think my understanding is that use of public transportation is going to be um low for a period of time, so uh if there could be an exploration, I like the idea of exploring, maybe renegotiating parking uh with Sam Trans as well as the Caltrain to expand that. Uh I think that um getting stakeholder input from the businesses downtown is going to be very important. Um again, you know, a lot of this is focusing on the restaurants, but we also have to recognize that there are other businesses downtown, so um uh and I I do like the idea of giving consideration to those businesses that aren't just on Laurel but nearby, that are also going to have to deploy the social distancing. Uh there was a suggestion made with respect to um maybe we employ valet parking. Um that concerns me a little bit, just because we'd be asking somebody to get into somebody else's car and park it. Um and just from, you know, the way that COVID-19 uh spreads, I'm I'm a little concerned about that as a potential solution. Um that being said, if we could identify other locations for accessible parking, I think that that would be important to look at. And I'd also be curious, at some point in the future, this uh staff could give us an update on the bike and pedestrian plan. Uh that would maybe potentially satisfy some of the uh safe or slow streets, because I know there's there's a lot of work that's been underway there, and and maybe if we understood where that was in its development process, we could take a look about bringing some of those ideas forward at this time. So.
Thank you, Laura. Um Sarah?
Thank you, Mayor. Um so I'll start with Laurel Street. I I do support moving forward with the pilot project. Um I I agree with Laura that, you know, some significant outreach to the business owners along Laurel. Um I would hope that, you know, I'm sure that we would undertake that, but um you know, I'm sure that there's some businesses that might feel um just, you know, they might suffer a little bit by by doing this, and I want to make sure that we're um working hard to make sure that we're supporting all of the businesses. Um but I I, you know, our downtown is our crown jewel, and I want to make sure that we're doing everything as we that we can as a local government to to support our businesses and help them make it through this time. Um one other thing that I think we should look at is um the possibility of parking spilling over into the neighborhoods that are close to Laurel Street. Um we'll have to just take that into account as well. Um but I'm glad to hear that the negotiations are close or complete with Sam Trans, and if we can explore a little more with Caltrain, I think that might be worthwhile, too. And as for the Slow Streets, I've really struggled with it. I'm a mom, too, and I've been out on bike rides with my kids, and um you know, I I take full account of all the people who called in tonight, and I appreciated all of those comments, and um I'm still, you know, thinking through the loop factor, and um I liked Adam's comment about maybe closing Old County Road on a Sunday morning or something. Um but the chief's comments about just the safety issues, this strong and serious concerns that he has, that that gives me pause. So um, you know, I'm sure that's something that the subcommittee can can continue to wrestle with. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Um Mark? I need to unmute yourself, Mark.
That that's, most people don't need to remind me of that, Ron. Yes, but thank you. Um so uh I I just wanted to uh mention, listening to the comments from some of some of the other members of the diocese. Um uh and without trying to limit what the scope of the subcommittee is, my my sense from, at least what I've learned about the Slow Streets component of this, if we do something, is Slow Streets is not closing a street. I mean, you literally are not closing the street to anything. What you're doing is you're putting up a si- you're putting up signage that basically says, "Slow Street, drive slowly", and you're putting it in such a fashion that it forces drivers and delivery trucks and whatnot to recognize, okay, this is in front of my face. I need to react to it. So that's why I mentioned before, it's, in that sense, it's kind of an educational thing to say, please be careful when you're on this street. That's really what it boils down to. It doesn't close the street at all. It's a, it's a reminder to drivers. Uh so I just want to uh point that out there, because that was something I had really appreciated early on, so I want to make sure that that people are aware of that. Thanks.
That's, that's a good point. That's a very good point. Um Laura?
Yeah, thank you. Um so one of the things I just wanted to uh suggest, and I forgot to mention it on the Laurel Street, was this idea of uh I think it was suggested by staff, one of the oppor- opportunities would be look at, again, certain hours of the day um to, you know, shut down the street. I'm just thinking about, you know, when is the demand of consumers and what are they looking to accomplish at certain times of day? And I'm I'm don't have an opinion either way, but I think it, as part of the input from stakeholders, is to understand when the optimal time would be uh to close the street, if it would be a hundred percent of the time every day of the week, or, you know, would we shut it late afternoon and evenings, um you know, for the dinner hour or or some such?
Okay, yeah, I I think we need to be thoughtful about this process, and I think we need to be careful as well about what we do, because all these, we have a lot of potential options that we have to consider, and people have a lot of good ideas, but there are consequences and and uh, you know, every action has a reaction, right? So, you know, whatever we do is that there's going to be some sort of a consequence to it. Um, okay, I don't see any other hands raised. Um so as far as the subcommittee goes, um I'm going to offer that uh, you know, Adam and I started talking about this uh a while back. Uh and we've had a lot of conversations, and uh i- if there's no great uh uh objection to it, I would like to propose uh that the subcommittee be Adam and myself. Um you know, we have, Adam's talked to a lot of business owners, sort of a logical choice, and uh I too have had a lot of recent interactions with business owners as well. So um unless then anybody's really clamoring to be on this subcommittee, uh that's what I would offer.
Mr. Mayor, uh I actually, um I certainly have uh no strong objection to what you're proposing, but I too am very interested and have spent a lot of time talking to a lot of business owners and and other other stakeholders as well recently, so I would certainly uh uh welcome an opportunity to be on the subcommittee.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
Just, Mayor, if I can just, I mean, I appreciate that. I'm certainly obviously interested in, you know, being on the downtown subcommittee as well, sort of ties in with the work with that. And having been on the chamber board before, I think it's just something I have a good outreach in the business community, and I'm interested overall in this topic. So I would welcome the opportunity to be on it with you.
Okay, all right. Well, I don't see, we've heard from everybody, I guess, at this point, we need to decide, we need a motion as to who the members of the subcommittee ought to be. And then we'll take all of these comments, the subcommittee will take all these comments to heart and talk to staff and have some meetings, and then we'll come back with some recommendations. There is some...
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
And they may not have anything to add relative to the subcommittee, but I didn't hear anything from Sarah or Laura about their interest in perhaps being on the subcommittee.
Oh, thank you. So Laura or Sarah, feedback from you?
I'm happy to defer to whoever else is interested. That's fine with me.
Yeah, I was going to say the same. Just as long as you do everything I just said, I'm good with it.
I can count on you, Laura, to be so outgoing and agreeable.
Yeah, so I moved to establish and appoint committee members, Ron Collins and Adam Rack to the street closure ad hoc subcommittee.
I think we need a second for that?
Yes.
I guess I'll second it.
Okay. All right. Do we need a roll call for this, Crystal?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Adam, did you have another?
I guess the only question is, I don't know if we were, are we going to then have a discussion about the authority of the subcommittee? That's sort of part of the item? Is that something we should do now or wait till after the subcommittees?
I don't have a preference either way. Greg, is there anything, is there a consideration that we haven't thought of here before we make that decision as well?
Typically, a subcommittee studies an issue and then comes back with a recommendation to the council. If you do something different than that, it might require that the, if the subcommittee is empowered to make a decision, it might turn it into a Brown Act body, and it would have to have noticed meetings.
So probably not a good idea to give the subcommittee more than just recommendation authority?
It's unusual to give a subcommittee more than that authority, especially something complex like this.
Right. And that's, when I saw that, I wondered about that myself.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, if I could add, we just wanted to agendize it that way so that the council had the option of considering it. The only thing that would really sort of speak in favor of that, obviously, is that for the folks on the business side of this, particularly the Laurel Street one, there seems to be a sense of urgency. And, you know, that might be a way to move it along quicker. But again, as I said, we just wanted to make sure we agendized it in such a way that council had the full suite of options available tonight to them.
All right. Well, I'm going to certainly make myself available very quickly, assuming the motion passes as proposed. Same with Adam. Okay, with that, Crystal, would you like to call the roll?
Yes. Vice Mayor Parmenlohan?
Yes.
Crystal, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. My, I got a note that said that my connection was unstable.
It's a little bit slow, but we can hear you, I think. Thank you.
Okay, so if you could call the roll?
Okay. Vice Mayor Parmenlohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
With all due respect and expecting nothing but wonderful work from the subcommittee, I vote no.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay, well, we've got our work cut out for us, and we'll get together with staff, and we'll get some dates together very quickly. Hopefully, maybe by the next meeting. Do you think, Jeff, we might be able to come up with some recommendations?
Well, I think it's too soon to say. Obviously, it's going to be contingent on yourself and Councilmember Rack's availability to us, as well as obviously the sort of external piece that's outside of our control, how quickly we can get the feedback that you'll be looking for from the business community. But I think the goal, the goal in my mind here is that, you know, we're sort of anticipating that, you know, it looks unlikely that restaurants are going to be allowed to open in any regard through May. So I think we need to, at least right now, have the hopeful assumption that June 1st, they may be allowed to, and to try to have a plan in place by then. So, you know, we're certainly going to be moving quickly. My sense from the city council, and we can maybe just get, you know, some heads nodding here, is that if the subcommittee feels like they've reached a point where they need to get additional council feedback, or they need the council to make a decision, and it falls in between council meetings, that the council would be okay with us setting up a special meeting to get back to you in as timely manner as the subcommittee has reached that point to keep things moving forward quickly here.
Right.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
The, as a practical matter, I suspect that even with the best intentions in the world, nothing could happen before June 1st anyway. But personally, unless I'm misunderstanding something, I think we need to remember that part of what could happen through doing something involving Laurel Street wouldn't necessarily have to involve the restaurants themselves physically reopening. So for example, you know, imagine a situation where there's a bunch of tables and stuff put out in Laurel Street, and effectively, it's takeout, okay? So the restaurants are actually closed, except they're allowed to be open for takeout, but they end up having, they're more attractive to people, because people can go get their takeout and go sit out in the street and enjoy the nice evening and whatever. So the physical reopening of the restaurants is not really, I think, a gating event for this. Although, as I said, I don't think that you're going to be able to get anything done. If you can, that's great. I don't think you're going to be able to get anything done by June 1st anyway.
That's a good point, and we will definitely run that concept by the county, whatever they're calling themselves, Greg, the legal task force that's looking at those kinds of things. And if that's a possibility, then that's something that the subcommittee should definitely consider.
Right. Yeah, I couldn't speak with the county council's office and some of my fellow city attorneys about some things that they might be doing in that regard.
I don't want to rush it, but I do know that there are a lot of anxious business people out there who are very worried about their businesses. And I would just like to make sure that we are, we move at whatever speed we can to, you know, to make some accommodations.
Through the chair? Just one other point, just to reiterate something that I said earlier. I also hope the subcommittee, and whether you use this idea or adaptation, you know, there are two classes of businesses essentially on Laurel Street, restaurants and retail shops. That bizarre concept where we allow, we might allow the non-restaurant business owners to have stall space essentially out in the street or on the sidewalk or whatever, that might be substantially more attractive, or might make the idea of closing Laurel Street substantially more attractive to them. So things like that, you know, in other words, instead of just reaching out to them, saying, "How do you feel about an idea?" It's more like working with them, saying, "What do we need to do to make this idea attractive to you?"
Yeah. Okay, good point. All right. Well, with that decision done, let's move on to new business. Item 10A is consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a rent forbearance agreements with nonprofit organizations leasing city-owned property. And that, I guess, is Greg?
Yeah, that's my staff report tonight. It's, I'll be brief. The city is a landlord in many cases in town, particularly in the library and the Kiwanis Building in Burton Park. We've been approached by two nonprofits that we rent to, and perhaps more. But there's two that we've definitely heard from that are seeking some sort of a rent deferment agreement to help them get through the COVID crisis. They have different reasons why their income has been reduced because of the crisis, but in each case, they've asked for relief. And we provided you with a form as an exhibit that's just, it's supposed to be an example of what a rent deferment agreement might be like. And the form provides for a six-month deferral and then a, then a slow, I mean, excuse me, a three-month deferral and then a slow payback of six months. But what we've brought before you tonight in that resolution is to give some flexibility to the city manager to negotiate something that works for each of the nonprofits, because their situations might be different. Other examples of deferment might be to require a longer payback period because of the nature of the business, or a payback period that results from the renegotiation of the lease to extend its term but incorporate the amount of the deferral period into a longer period of time under a renegotiated lease. Those are two examples I've thought of. But we're not limited by that in the action that we're asking you to take tonight. It's just, we've just heard the request right now, so we don't really have all the information we need to kind of give a concrete recommendation for you on what a forbearance agreement terms might look like. So you have, yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, this is really just, you know, basically authorizing Jeff to enter into an agreement that is, that is in the best interest of both the city and the nonprofit.
And the, the main thing that is in here, just to be clear, is that the proposal is that there not be any loss in revenue to the city through the forbearance. It's just raised basically how long of a payback period is required and what form that takes. So that's the authority you're giving the city manager to negotiate that type of agreement.
Crystal, do we have any public comment queued up for this item?
We don't at the moment, but let me go ahead and share the screen for the public to see.
All right. Well, while we're doing that, and allowing people to call in if they would like, this is probably a good time to take any questions from fellow council members if they're so inclined. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The quickest button, I'm telling you.
It's right, it's right. My laptop is like two inches away from my hand. So the Greg was the, nothing in what we're doing here prevents us at some future date if one of the people that we forbear a rent with comes back and says, "Hey, look, I can't afford to pay you back." Separately discuss that, correct?
No, we can always revisit based on changed circumstances in the future if what we anticipated didn't come to fruition.
Okay, because, you know, I'm hoping we get paid back, because it's always good to get paid back. But I'm also recognizing that that may not happen. I mean, most, many of the other support programs around don't contemplate that. So thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of Greg by my fellow council members? All right. Crystal, has anybody called in?
No, it doesn't appear, we don't appear to have any callers for this item.
All right. Okay. Well, with that, I think I'd entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 2020-24, a resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos authorizing the city manager to enter into rent forbearance agreements with nonprofit organizations leasing city-owned property.
All right, Sarah, second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion second. Any other discussion on this item? All right, Crystal? Oh, I'm sorry, Laura?
Yeah, I guess, thank you. I guess my computer's just that much further away from me than Mark's is from his.
Yeah, movement.
Teaching how to hit that button.
I guess I've got to rehearse. I've got to rehearse. So I just wanted to just point out with this, that in light of the extraordinary circumstances associated with COVID-19, many critical not-for-profit organizations are at risk. And much of the programs that I have witnessed have come forward are really around small businesses or individuals. And there's very little support that's been generated at a federal level for not-for-profit organizations, and they do play a vital role in our community. And so I believe that this is an important step that the city could take, because these organizations are so important to our health and vitality. And I do hope that large banks follow our lead when it comes to commercial leases. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other statements before we vote? Okay, Crystal?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parmenlohan?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Next item is, Item 10B, consideration of adopting a resolution denouncing xenophobia and anti-Asian sentiment due to fears of the COVID-19 pandemic and affirming the city of San Carlos's commitment to the well-being and safety of Asian-American community.
Tara Peterson, Assistant City Manager.
Hello, Tara.
Good morning, or good evening. It feels like morning, a long day. We're bringing this before council at its request at the last council meeting, to bring forth a resolution denouncing xenophobia and anti-Asian sentiment due to fears of the COVID-19 pandemic. Crystal, do you move forward the slide, please? Oh, I can control my own? I'll try. Did it work? Seen the whole thing, guys? All right. Reports of anti-Asian sentiment have been growing recently due to the COVID-19 virus. According to the Asian Pacific Policy and Planning Council, as the virus has spread, Asian-Americans have experienced offensive comments and actions related to their races, such as social profiling, hate incidents, and in some cases, violence. Characterizing COVID-19 as a Chinese virus encourages hate crimes and other attacks against Asian-Americans at a time when communities should actually be working together to get through this crisis. COVID-19 is a public health issue, not a racial issue. It doesn't discriminate, and neither should people. Others who have joined this cause are throughout the county. On April 10th, San Mateo County Asian Pacific Islanders Caucus and Peninsula Leaders issued a joint statement denouncing racism and xenophobia. Since that time, other jurisdictions within the county have brought forward resolutions or proclamations intended to stand in solidarity with the Asian-American communities, sending a message that discriminatory behavior motivated by hate will not be tolerated. These cities include Belmont, Daly City, Foster City, Millbrae, and San Mateo. In addition, the county of San Mateo has also passed a resolution. San Carlos values its diverse communities. All the way back in 2017, which doesn't seem that long ago, but yet it seems a very long time ago, the city council declared San Carlos a welcoming city. City council's current core values within its strategic plan pledge to ensure that San Carlos is a safe, diverse, welcoming, and engaged community. Passing this resolution demonstrates a commitment to our Asian-American community during this challenging time and encourages reporting of xenophobic or discriminatory incidents. Passing the resolution has been recommended by the San Mateo County Office of Equity and Diversity as well. Passing the resolution has been recommended by the San Mateo County Office of Equity and Diversity as well. Help stop hate. You can help stop hate by contacting the County Office of Diversity and Equity to learn more about the Chinese Health Initiative and other support services related to COVID-19 at the website provided here. You can call 911 and report when you witness or are a victim of an assault such as a deliberate coughing or sneezing or physical threatening actions. These assaults are hate crimes, and they're not acceptable. Or you can register your experience by visiting the Stop AAPI Hate Reporting Center website, which was launched in March, on March 19th, at the two websites provided here. So, council action this evening is to pass the proposed resolution with or without changes or to provide staff with alternate direction. And with that, I can try to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you, Tara. Nice presentation. Crystal, do we have any public comment lined up?
I am not seeing any at this moment, but we'll give them a few minutes.
Okay, so in the meantime, why don't we see if there's any questions by my fellow council members for Tara? I am not seeing any, so. And so far, we don't, we do not have any speakers?
I'm not seeing anyone call in.
All right. I thought I saw a potential guest. I didn't know if they were going to be invited to speak, but it might have been something on my screen. Okay, with that, why don't we, why don't we entertain a motion here?
I move to adopt Resolution 2020-25, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos denouncing xenophobia and anti-Asian sentiment due to fears of the COVID-19 pandemic and affirming the City of San Carlos's commitment to the well-being and safety of the Asian-American community.
All right. Sarah second? Everybody's muted, so I need a second. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you very much. All right, any other comment on this issue? And because I don't see any, this is an unusual situation. I just want to make sure one last time that no one else called in, Crystal?
No, we don't have any callers.
Okay. All right, well then, let's, let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember McDowell?
Laura has her hand up, I think.
Oh, Laura, I apologize. I was looking in the wrong direction there. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mayor Collins. So I am in favor of this. I'm glad that the council is considering this. It's very unfortunate that some members of our community seek to blame others for their troubles. Intolerance will not be tolerated, and by adopting this resolution, the City Council will further demonstrate its commitment to San Carlos as a welcoming, inclusive community. So I'm very much in support of this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Laura. And Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I second everything that Laura just said. We are a welcoming city and proud of it. It's good to go on record for it. I fully support the resolution. Personally, I also fully support going beyond that to any other ethnic group that may be unfairly attacked in this situation. I've just heard reports of all sorts of people being attacked for all sorts of strange reasons, and none of it has any place in civilized society, let alone in the city of good living.
All right, thank you. And I'll just add finally, as I've said before, no one chooses their skin color. You don't choose your parents, you don't choose your eye color, you don't choose your gender. And to discriminate against somebody because of things that are the result of their heritage makes no sense at all to me. It's really abhorrent. So with that, why don't we call the roll out?
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parmerlohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brack?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Now we're on to item 11, which is additional council communications and announcements. And we are going to return to, I believe, Mark had mentioned earlier that he wanted to talk about an agenda-setting item, so great time, Mark, for it.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is a follow-on to my comments about the serious financial challenges that are currently facing the San Carlos School District and how we might be able to help. The proposal I'd like to make is that the council task, I guess probably the two-plus-two, our representatives on the two-plus-two, to meet quickly with the school district and in concert with staff, come back with some proposals that we could evaluate as to whether or not there's a way for us to loan them some money to make a significant difference in challenges that they're facing. So basically, it's tasked the two-plus-two to do that work quickly and come back to us with some ideas.
All right. Adam, I want to come to you in just a second. Greg, is there any issue with this approach?
No, right now, we're just agendizing something for discussion. You can't, you already have a standing committee that can take it up, so you're just directing that committee to look into it right now, if that's the way I see it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. And I just want to express my support for Councilmember Obert's idea, and I would just want to add to it, to look at not just sort of a loaning option, but, you know, are there things that we should maybe think about paying for? Things like, the crossing guards come to mind to me. They're sort of a public safety issue, and maybe that's something we just, we just take over the cost of crossing guards instead of splitting it with the, with the school board. So I'd like to look at kind of both options in the two-plus-two. But I support your idea. I think it's a good, good discussion to have.
Sarah?
Thank you, Mayor. So Adam and I sat on the two-plus-two, and I was just looking at my calendar today, and I think we're scheduled to meet in the next couple of weeks before school gets out. So that's a lot of things that I think that we can start discussing, and I'm happy to bring Councilmember Obert's ideas to the meeting as well. But thank you for raising those, Mark.
Great. Okay. Laura, I didn't miss you this time.
No. So I have a question. So if, from a procedural perspective, so if the two-plus-two convenes and Mark is forwarding ideas to that committee, does that create some Brown Act issues?
Yeah, it could. We want to be careful about that. I think the, bringing it up here at this meeting is obviously different than bringing it up at a later time. But I can talk, if, if suggestions are to go to the two-plus-two, we could, there's, there's got to be a way to figure out how to get that, those types of suggestions to the committee to, to consider. If we can't, then, then we'll, they can certainly be brought back to the, when the council reconsider's the matter.
Okay, thank you, Greg. And then am I at liberty to talk conceptually about the relationship between the school and the city at this point? Or, and about this idea in particular?
Yeah, we're on agenda-setting. I mean, it's, you probably can only go at this, to state the issue as opposed to discussing it is kind of the line I think is appropriate at this point.
Got it. Okay, so I would, my request would be that we identify areas that are appropriate in terms of the relationship between the city and the school. I think generally speaking, everybody is facing budget concerns at this time, and I know Jeff has shared with us that he'll be working to better understand the impact of COVID-19 on city revenues and what we have to work with. And I do know that the school has been having some challenges with budget in the past, and I believe it was going to be an area that we were going to explore during the budgeting timeframe anyway. So I'm in, I'm in favor of it, but I think making sure that the, it's done in an appropriate way, if that makes sense. So in other words, where are the intersection of the schools and the city meets? Similar to what Adam said with respect to crossing guards, because I think that was mentioned in past. Hopefully, that wasn't overreaching.
Through the chair?
Yes.
And Greg, you know, wave your hand or something if I go too far, but just to clarify what I had meant. And by the way, Laura, thank you for, for pointing out that risk of Brown Act issues. My intention actually was not to communicate anything to the subcommittee after tonight because I figured this is a public meeting and we're charging the subcommittee, and that's the appropriate forum for doing it. I am personally happy for the subcommittee in working with the district to consider all sorts of different options. My main goal is kind of along the lines of my comment that I made earlier. We need to remember that the sine qua non of why San Carlos is doing as well as it is is in part due to great management by city staff, but it's also because everybody wants to live here because of the, the school district. And so we literally cannot afford to, to, you know, if there's things that we can do without hamstringing ourselves, we cannot afford to let them go down. And what I heard was that they are, just for everybody's benefit, what I heard is that they are actually flirting with the threshold at which, depending on how the numbers work out, they might be, under law, have to be taken over by the state. Don't know if that's true, I heard. And if that's where they are, I can tell you as a former trustee, that's pretty bloody serious. Okay, so, you know, do what, come back, two-plus-two, come back with what's reasonable, but please try and remember to do what we can, consider what we can.
Well said, Mark. Thank you. Okay, I think you guys have sufficient direction there?
We do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other reflections or comments by any other council members?
Yes, I did, if I may. Thank you. I'll, I'll be brief. The first thing I was going to say, suggest is, we should ask Crystal, see if she can find a voice-activated unmuter for the mayor, so that you can...
I thought I've gotten better throughout the meeting, but, you know.
No, 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 believe me, it's a lot to run the meetings and remembering to press the stupid button.
Yes, I've heard that.
I was also going to ask, and this may not be possible, if there's a way that Crystal could find out if we can screen the callers that are coming in to deal with the issue we dealt with tonight, where people were calling in on basically the wrong item. They didn't know any better, but they were, rather than, you know, dump them into the, into the meeting itself. And in that regard, I was thinking that maybe we could even, if we could do nothing else, we could do something as simple as when we put up a slide that says, you know, "Call in if you have a public comment", maybe we could put on there the name of the item, you know, that we're talking about, you know, like general public comment, or we're talking about this or that, and the other things, so people would know, they'd have a bit of a cue.
Good suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The last comment I was going to make is, you know, I know that this is a very stressful time, and I, I very much appreciate all the work that, that, that staff is putting into stuff. I did feel a little bit that some of the, some of the stuff in the items on the street closure, slow streets, whatnot, I, I felt that in some cases, it was almost like a literal analysis of a question that we had asked as opposed to, "Yeah, that's what you asked, but here's a way to actually do it, I think you want us to do." And so to the extent that we can stay focused on the latter, that would be really helpful, because that's what we generally do anyway. And I think it would help move the discussions of the council along.
Okay. Any other final thoughts? Okay. Any comments by staff or city administration, city administrative business?
Nothing additional this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We, the next item is closed session, and Greg, I wanted to ask you, normally, after a closed session, we come back into a open session and we formally close the meeting. I was in a Caltrain meeting last week where we went into closed session, and it was announced beforehand by our council that she was going to report out on the closed session at the next board meeting. And I'm wondering if that procedure is something that we might be able to follow here rather than opening back up the, the general public meeting only to say that there's no report out and then close it?
Well, you know, that's one of those things where I think it depends. If an action is taken, sometimes it needs to be reported out, but I don't anticipate that tonight. So why don't we, you could, you could, I don't think in this case, it's just going to be, we're going to toggle back into the regular meeting, and I could, we could just say the closed session ended, and there'd be, there was no report out of closed session. It just requires somebody to do that. So I'd be glad to do that right after we, we close out the closed session if people want to sign off. But
Okay.
It's supposed, sometimes it has to be in the same meeting, so I'm not comfortable doing that in advance.
Okay, so I would, and I'll leave the logistics of that to you and Crystal.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then with that, we are going to adjourn to closed session, and I think I need a little bit of direction from Crystal at this point. I think, we, do we close out, Crystal, or are you going to extend us a message?
Yeah, if you can stay where you, you're at, you're going to see a little pop-up soon that's going to ask you to join the breakout meeting.
Okay, great. If there's no other comments or business, this meeting stands adjourned.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.
Good night.